Good evening. We will call the April 13th Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If you would please join us as we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we do before each meeting, we, before we get into our agenda, we recognize a moment of silence. As we go into this evening's moment of silence, I would like to ask for your thoughts and prayers with one of our employees, Dale Bliss, who lost his brother last week. So he'll think of he and his family. And with that, we'll call a moment of silence, please. And welcome to all of you that are here tonight. Lots of new faces, and thanks for filling our room this evening. The first thing on our agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Next, I will turn it over to our town attorney to conduct the public hearing this evening.
All right. Good evening. There will be a public hearing conducted this evening by the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners. The following rules of procedure will apply to the hearing. A public notice of the hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on town bulletin boards in accordance with statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner, made a part of the record of the hearing, and shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue into a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesman for a group where if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement will be taped. There will be no debates. Please identify yourself when you come forward. This public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the establishment of a municipal service district related to the town of Kill Devil Hills Beach Erosion Control and Flood and Hurricane Protection Works Project. In preparation for this public hearing, a report has been prepared, which includes information on the proposed beach nourishment project and the proposed municipal service district. I would add that a notice was mailed to all property owners and the proposed MSD is required by the statute. That certification has been filed by the clerk in the record, and we are now open and in public hearing. Some folks have signed up. There may have been some confusion on the sign up, and I'll try to work from two sheets as I go through this to make sure. The first speaker is Norm Sharon. Norm, if you would come up to the microphone, please.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, uh, my name is Norm Sharon, and I'm an attorney from the north, as in southern shores. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Meyer Neil Morrison, who is a major landowner here in the, in the town of Kill Devil Hills. I want to direct my comments primarily to the legal effect on property rights of the, of the project itself, and to some extent to the district. The, as, as you know, and your report, your project report says that, that the project owners within the district will benefit from this proposed beach nourishment project. Well, that's not true in, in Ms. Morrison's case. She, her property is, has been stable. It's, it's a property that her family acquired, her father Fred Morrison acquired in, in 1944, and, and the, and, and they don't, they've not experienced any, any great erosion. The property that she owns, so some of you are familiar with it, encompasses the, what is still called the Friday House. It was owned by Bill Friday and his family on the oceanfront. The major beneficiaries of this project are going to be the public, not the private landowners. And you, if you look, I gave your, your capable town attorney some copies of a couple of statutes that I, that I'm going to refer to, and I tried to mark the relevant portion so you wouldn't have to read a lot of legal gobbledygook, but I apologize for, for that. I mean, that's, the General Assembly is responsible for that language, not me, so don't hold it against me. But, you know, you're, you need to recognize that this, right now, before you begin your project, the extent of private property rights is mean high water. But once you, you put sand on that beach and you put, you put sand in the ocean, that's all going to be state-owned property. And as regards these, these folks have now got private oceanfront property that they have owned and enjoyed for years, the, the, the public is, after your project is in place, will, will acquire rights. They even get secondary easements so that they can, they can cross the now private property. So you, you need to be aware of that. I mean, you may, you may feel you have no choice, but at least I want you to, to be informed about the consequences of, of what you undertake to do. The, it's going to be necessary for the, for the town to acquire easements to accommodate your project. Those easements are going to be public in nature. The statutory provisions I've shown you will, will, will show you that when you have a public project that's paid for with public funds, the state acquires those rights, and the town has no, no authority whatsoever with regard to so-called public trust rights. The town of Nag's Head learned that in a lawsuit with us a couple of years ago. The, the state is the only party that has standing to enforce public trust rights, so don't, don't operate on the assumption that, I think has been fostered by the town of Kill Devil Hill, I mean, not Kill Devil, but Nag's Head, that, that somehow the public owns that, that oceanfront entirely, and they do not. You, you should recognize too that, that when you take, when you take the oceanfront and you put, you put sand out there in a publicly financed project, that all these oceanfront owners are going to lose their littoral and, and riparian rights. They will no longer have direct access to the ocean. So just be mindful of that. And I recognize that, that, that you probably have looked at, you've got areas, I mean, I've, I've watched the, the, the ocean wash away, the, the oceanfront down near, what, down near the Sea Ranch. I was foolish enough several years ago to buy a condo from Bob Young at Casa del Sol, and the first thing that did was try to wash away. So I mean, I've had a apple or two out of the barrel myself, but, you know, there are areas in your town that need this project, but, but Ms. Morrison does not. And I would, I think she has told me that if you're, she's not going to grant you an easement voluntarily, so you'll have to condemn her easement if you go forward. I know that's not going to stop you. I'm, I'm quite familiar with the town's right of eminent domain, but...
Fifteen seconds, Mr. Sharon.
Okay. Well, I just want to say that, that I'm not going to try to second-guess your financing mechanism, but I would, Ms. Morrison would certainly appreciate it if you, if, if you try to lighten the load on, on property taxes and do it some other way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. The next person who's signed up, I'm sorry, I cannot read your name, so I'll use your address. 10-19 North Virginia Dare Trail. Please come up and identify yourself.
10-19 North Virginia Dare Trail.
Mayor Davies and Commissioners, I'm Phil Hobbs, and I'm president of the Gulf Stream Owners Association, and your taper ends at our property. And so, so we have a concern about that. We have several questions that we would like to pose to the commission, and we hope that you'll give us some answers in your, in your public comments that you're going to have, where you're going to reply to some of our concerns. We have concerns that we'd like to share with you, and believe it or not, we have some solutions that we'd like to give to you this evening as we go along here that may help you with the tax burden. We reviewed your videos and your public information, and we have looked at additional research and websites to look at the total issue. One of the concerns we have is why is the MSD property owners, we have to pay 11 times the tax rate of the rest of the city? And we're sort of curious as to where was this public forum that you come up with this number? And how long will this tax be in effect? Is this a five-year? Is this unlimited? And what happens if you get extra money? What, what if your appraisal is wrong and you get more money than what you thought? Then what are we going to do with those funds? And how long is this going to go? And do we have a continuation of this? Why do the taper areas have to be taxed at .33? We're going to get 10 foot of sand, about what it's going to amount to, but yet we're going to have to pay, as an owner, $1,600 a year for that 10 foot of sand. And we would like to have a little relief in the, in the taper areas. Now also note, Kill Devil Hills has one of the highest tax rates in the county to start with, and then you're going to put this on top of us. It appears that the greater tax burden that's put in place on the beach is with the beach front owners, and we're out-of-towners. We don't have a vote. We can't vote for you. We can't vote you in, we can't vote you out. And so we are convenient for you that we'll put the tax on the out-of-towners and let them pay for everything because they can't vote. And that's what's happening. We have a bed tax, same type of thing, let the out-of-towners pay for it. And so we need to have some voice for the people that pay the taxes and own the property oceanfront. The purpose of the bed tax, I've seen in the paper, we're talking about beach nourishment, we're talking about dredging, we're talking about tourism. What was the original purpose of the bed tax, and how is that really using, being used, and is that being changed? If you pass the motion tonight, will that freeze the tax in the taper zones? Or will you be allowed to make some changes in the tax and make changes in the taper zone after you pass your motion tonight? We'd like to know that. What is your definition of the municipal service district? I know what the state says and allows you to do this, but I haven't seen how you come to that .33 cents that's been in a public discussion that we could take a look at and hear what was going on. So where did that come from? We have a concern of the possible conflict of interest that you have approached the beach nourishment project and in moving the taper area. I looked at a video the other day, and it looks like a lot of this is for certain groups or establishments and not the individual beach owners. So I have to ask the question, Mayor, I see on your bio, you are zealously guarding against conflict of interest or its appearance, and I have to wonder, is there a conflict of interest where we're worried about dealing with the Sea Ranch and all the commercial properties instead of the local owner? Is the MSD tax the start of other taxes? Can you use these districts to come up with funding for all kinds of other things? Is this, is this a start of many things to come for us on the oceanfront? The taper, the taper areas have been changed. Why were they changed, and who is responsible for the change? Originally, the north end was going to be at Tanya Drive. Now it's a prospect approved by your engineer. How did that come to be? Who come up with that, and why are we doing that? Because now that impacts us. Now we have to pay .33 instead of 3 because somebody arbitrarily moved that line, and we'd like to know why. We have a neighbor that's going to offer you an option on how we can finance this and make it fair to everyone. We also would ask for you to consider tonight, moving the taper or having the taper people pay less than the .33 for our 10 foot of sand that we're going to get. So we have some interesting questions that we hope that you can answer for us later this evening. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Bohan.
My name is Donna Bohan. My husband and I have owned property for the past 17 years on the Outer Banks, along with two other properties we bought a couple of years ago in Kill Devil Hills specifically. We are interested in beach nourishment plans, but feel concerned as, that as we as owners have very little say on the amount we are having to pay and how this amount was calculated. The new video on beach nourishment on the Kill Devil Hill website clearly emphasizes that the beach drives tourism, which in turn drives up the Kill Devil Hill economy and jobs. 4,000 to be exact in Kill Devil Hill schools the best in North Carolina, healthcare and public services. Therefore, how did the town council arrive at the $32 and 9 cent tax increase for MSD property, which is 8% of Kill Devil Hills and a 3% increase for the rest of the town, which is 92% of Kill Devil Hill? The owners of Gulf Stream condos have had an increase of 2.25% over the last 10 years. Was this not enough? Municipal service district property owners would pay 11 times the tax rate of 92% of the town property owners. Is this not an outrageous amount for MSD owners to pay? Would you reconsider this amount with guard to the oceanfront owners versus the rest of Kill Devil Hills? If the beach drives up tourism, then why not consider giving the MSD a break and distribute the amount more evenly over the timeframe? 3 cents versus .33. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Long.
My name is Margaret Long, and I'm a property owner at 1023 North Virginia Dare Trail. The property has been in my family since the late 40s. I myself have been a summer resident of the beach for 79 years. I know full well the movement of the sand and what happens to our beaches, so I have great empathy for the people that are north of my property. I wonder if we could come to some resolution that would be more reasonable in the taxation that we find that we are doing in what is, you all have named the taper. So I will refer all my questions to the taper area. We do understand that it was originally supposed to be started at Tanya Drive. We don't understand why it has moved. We don't understand, I have 100 front feet between my property line and the end of the taper district. Is it really fair for me to have to pay .33 on the dollar when we are already paying the highest property taxes in Dare County? I have no objections whatsoever to the beach nourishment, and I understand that it is a necessary thing for portions of the beach, but I do require some explanation for the inequity that has caused. It seems to me that the math is not correct. It's not thinking of the property owners who have been here for years and years, like some of the ones who've spoken today. We have done nothing but help this beach grove, and we hope that we will be able to do that in the future. We would like not to be run off the beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Betsy Hinton.
Actually, it's Charlie. He's here.
Okay. Charlie Hinton. I have to ask permission from her if I can speak. Before I start, this is the recommendation on the screen, I think, from the staff. Could you scroll to the last paragraph?
Please.
Okay, that's fine. Just hold it there. I'm Charles Hinton, and I own the man, I'm the managing, member manager of property at 1101 North Virginia Dare Trail, and it's a family LLC. I'm not a full-time resident, but I feel like I grew up here. I came to this beach as a toddler. My mother bought the cottage at Kill Devil Hills on the ocean in 1966. 1969, I worked for the town.
I was a summer policeman and worked for Tom Daddy. My late cousin, Bill Gard, gave me a recommendation, went out on a limb, and I was able to work as a policeman. We've maintained the family cottage. It's not a rental. We come down in spring, summer, fall, and we bring our grandchildren, our children. I went on a beach day, and it was a great beach day. I commend you for considering the nourishment project. People north of us particularly need that. Our beach in our area is stable and is building up. Now, two words came to me when I viewed your video on the website about this project. It was economics and equity, and all the speakers on air agreed that economics were critical. Without the beach, there would be no town, like, no business and no tourism. In fact, quote, 99% of the businesses are here because of the beach. Quote, without the beach, no tourism. Quote, without the beach, the beach is our industry. So on any given day when we're here in the summertime, the beach that has a lot of access behind our cottage, we have to almost fight for a place on the beach. There's so many people on the beach, I have to go out at 8 o'clock in the morning and stake out chairs and umbrellas so we'll have a place to go. We come down our gazebo, and we have to ask people to leave the steps so we can get on the beach. So we're talking about adding more beach. This MSD tax is .33 a hundred, and the rest of the town is 3 cents a hundred. I ask you, how is that fair? The very people who benefit the most from the economic standpoint are the businesses and all the other people from the west side of the beach road to the sand that come over and enjoy the ocean, which is what everybody comes down here for. So why is it fair that we would pay 11 times more than the people who live near? It strikes me that instead of equity, we're looking at arbitrary. And in the south beach, the 1,000-foot taper, property owners, and we're in the taper, we're asked to pay as much as the people north of us who will get 200 to 300 or 400 feet. We'll probably get 20 feet. How is that fair? Our beach is building up. In fact, when you look at the enabling statute, it talks about a common need. We don't need what the people on the north end of the beach need. So putting us in that MSD may violate the statute. I ask you, where is the equity? It seems there's more arbitrary than equity. And we're here tonight pursuant to the notice that you all mailed us, and this is the notice, and it, and part of it says, "As a result of this hearing, substantial changes may be made in the report as advertised to reflect objections, debate, and discussions at the hearing." And I refer you to the last paragraph on the staff's memorandum where it says, "At the conclusion of a public hearing," they're asking, they're recommending that you adopt the resolution, and that a motion be made in that order. So that sounds to me like somebody's already made their mind up, and I'm asking you to be fair, to think it through, and don't rush to a vote and our judgment. Don't be ill-advised and take an indefensible position on something like this. You know, fairness, equity is what we're looking for, and just thank you very much for a chance for me to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Albert Gard.
The memorandum on the screen was written at least two days ago. It is dated today, and it is on your website. My name is Albert Gard. I live at 1201 North Virginia Dare Trail, slightly north of Charlie. My family has owned the property since 1936, when my parents built our first cottage there. My grandfather was born in Mans Harbor, and my ties into the area go back to the 1800s. You have just heard a number of issues from, from some neighbors regarding beach nourishment. I'll summarize four of the major issues and provide a suggested solution for you to consider. I have copies of what I'm reading. It's one page, so I'll be as brief as possible. Issue number one, the .33 proposed tax rate for property in the municipal service district is 11 times that proposed for the rest of the town. That's outrageous and poses a big conflict of interest for each of you who live in the 3-cent area. There is a two-penny solution. I don't know how many people would approve this, but there is, to my way of thinking, a two-penny solution. Add 2 cents to the proposed tax rate for the non-MSD area of Kill Devil Hills. That would produce an 11-cent rate for the MSD, still a 32% increase, and an MSD rate over twice the total 5-cent rate for the rest of the town. Those rates, 11 cents for the MSD and 5 cents for the rest of the town, will substantially more equitable, be more equitable for all taxpayers and significantly mitigate your conflict of interest and professional ethics issues. Issue number two, the MSD as configured does not comply with the statutory requirements for an MSD, as Charlie alluded to, as it includes the beach south of Tanya, which, according to the town's own engineering studies, is stable, is stable. South of Tanya is stable and does not require nourishment. The solution, quite simple, stop the southern end of the MSD at Tanya. We're not sure how it got from Tanya to Windsong, but the board, the commissioners approved the project from Tanya north in the summer of 2013. Issue number three, I will, again, I'll provide a copy of this in a moment. The structure of the proposed funding plan does not allow a taxpayer to make long-term financial plans. The tax rate could be changed, and underlying real estate assessed values can and will change. Additionally, future nourishment costs cannot be determined. Recommended solution for you to consider, establish a funding plan that includes the following features. The property owner's tax bill would be fixed for five years, as I understand the length, the debt service period. It can, however, be increased if a property owner puts additions on his property. It will be decreased, however, as a result of the effect of property additions by others. Taxes collected will be used solely for the initial construction debt service. P.S., future beach nourishment issues and related costs will be addressed at such times as they occur. And at that point, we'll know something about whether the current project was successful and what effect it was. Last issue, and I'll quit. Issue number four, before tonight's meeting, this is what Charlie just concluded with. Before tonight's meeting, the town manager signed and dated a memorandum to the Kill Devil Hill mayor and commissioners recommending you approve, approve the proposed MSD tonight. It even states, "Town staff agrees." That memo distresses many of us presenting tonight, and I suggest each of you, because you obviously cannot receive careful and diligent advice from those individuals on issues the public's talking about tonight. Solution, do not vote tonight. Please, please study and give careful consideration to the issues and suggested solutions we're presenting here tonight. we're presenting here tonight, and we're just getting started. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I have a second list where folks signed up for public comment, which is separate. And I'm going to run through it to see if you meant to sign up for the public hearing comment. Mr. Hobbs, I see you signed both, so you've already spoken. Ms. Long. You, you, you signed both. Roger Bohan is on the public comment list. Did you want to speak at this here? No. Donna Bohan has already spoken. Mr. Hinton has already spoken. Mr. Gard has already spoken.
Guilty as charged.
Guilty as charged. Danny King. Did you want to speak at this one or the public comment? Okay. Jack McCombs, Jack, you scratched off this one, so you're on the public comment. Betsy Birdsong. Jean Winton. And Raymond Murray. Then come up, Mr. Murray. Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Raymond Murray. I have property at 2028 North Virginia Dare Trail. There's been a lot said about the visitors and how much they benefit from the, from the beach. And, and in my case, they actually walk across my little parcel of property that I have that goes to the beach, use it every day, going and coming. And I'm like the other gentlemen, if I don't get out there at 8:00 or 8:30 in the morning, I've got to fight for a little spot on, on the beach, which is very subtle because I, I really don't use the beach, beach much. I'm 75 years old and those days are behind me. But nevertheless, the, the point that I want to make and the problem that I have is that in your beach nourishment proposal, I am one of seven houses on the west side of Virginia Dare Trail that's being charged to 33% on the east side of Virginia Dare Trail. And I find that hard to, to understand. Now, originally, that was the Claydon property. There was a motel there. And, and I'm sure when that motel was washed out, they didn't tell, the city fathers didn't tell the gentleman, well, we're sorry that your motel is gone and the buildings are no longer there, but we're going to charge you taxes on those buildings that aren't there. And that's somewhat of the nature of this situation because I have no building over there. I've only got a little section of property, which is about 20 feet wide on, from the beach road over to the, the watermark, on, a high watermark on the ocean. 20 feet wide, I can't build anything on it, and I know that. I pay taxes on that every year and I know that. And, but that's the, the privilege that I, I pay those taxes so that I can sit on my deck and look out over those sand dunes that we spent hundreds of dollars putting sand fence out there to create a nice dune. And we now have a dune which is about, oh, I don't know, 75 to 100 feet long or maybe even further than that. It's a nice deep dune now. We spent a lot of time on that. But now I'm, they're telling me that they want to charge me 33% on my property, which is on the other side, on the west side of the, of the beach road, see. And I don't think that's fair. Now, I, the way I look at it, I ought to pay whatever the value of that property is from the beach road to the ocean. I'll pay my 33% on that and be satisfied. And then I'll pay the 3% on the other side where all those other houses up and down Virginia Dare Trail are being charged 3%. We're talking, Mr. Hogan said, "Let's be fair and honest and, and compromise." Well, this is what I think we need to do. We need to look at this situation and see what's going on here. There are only seven property owners along there that have that little stretch of 20-foot-wide piece of, of beach. We had nothing to do with the division of that property when, when the Claydon was, was washed out. The city fathers and the gentlemen that owned that property were the ones that eventually came up and said, "Okay, you can divide it up into these seven parcels if you want to do that." And that's the way they did it. So, I'm asking you to look at that and consider that our property over on the west side of, of the beach road be charged the same as everybody else. And then the piece on the, on the, on the east side going into the ocean be charged at the 33% rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who wants to speak at this public hearing? Come up and give us your name, please.
My name is Robert Reese. We own property at 2807 Virginia Dare Trail. You may know our house, we're the one that stands out closer to the ocean than most of the houses near us. I really feel that this is really a very unfair situation that you've placed upon us. We are not residents of North Carolina, we are residents of Virginia, and you are increasing our taxes for a great deal. We do not spend a lot of our time at the beach. We spend maybe a couple months a year total at the beach, and yet we're being taxed at an extremely high rate for, it sounds like, property that we won't be able to do anything about. Compare that to the guy across the street who rents his house out. He's making a huge profit over the fact that he can rent that house and have access to a beach. We've talked and various people have talked about the economic benefits. Well, he'll be able to charge an increased rent because of the greater beach over there. And his people use our property to get to the beach. They can't walk 50 yards down the street to get to the public access. So, thus, it really is a, sort of an insult. We're being taxed without representation. We are being overcharged for people that are across the street who do not have, who use the same beach that we'll be able to use, and yet they are, can make a profit. One of the suggestions that I would like to make is that you tax all the rental properties that are going to be able to benefit from this and not tax the private landowners. Thank you.
Sir, would you state your last name again, please?
My name is Robert Reese, spelled R.E.I.S.S.E.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? It's your last opportunity. Does the council have any questions of anyone who has spoken or any of the staff before we close the public hearing?
As far as staff, can maybe trace some of the, the history? The discussion about where the taper has moved from originally, it was estimated at Tanya to Winson. Now, I know that change came before us based on the study, the, the most recent study that was done. Can you speak to that to maybe just?
Well, our geologists, coastal geologists and our engineering team, coastal planning and engineering, made that recommendation and the municipality thought it was a good recommendation. I understand some do not. And somebody's always going to be in the taper. And, and you know, that's, that's always a problem, you know, as far as how do you handle that?
A taper is required.
Right, right.
Part of the design, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or?
But it is not required.
You can't speak now. This is, this is opportune for the council to ask questions.
So, we only have one taper at the south end. The north end is going to continue on through Kitty Hawk?
Yes, sir. If, if Kitty Hawk does not do their project, then there would be a taper that we would have to do into Kitty Hawk.
All right. Any other questions of staff or anyone? Are we ready to close the public hearing now?
For, for clarification, Steve, during our discussion, for the discussion of the board, are we limited then with questions to staff?
You, you will not be able to take any other comments from anyone. It will only be your discussions and deliberations. If you want to keep the public hearing open, we can do that until you're ready to close it and feel like you've gotten all your questions answered. So, if you think that during your discussion, questions might come up that you want to ask, we will keep the public hearing open so you can do that.
So, just for clarification again, if, if we, if we have comments, if we have something to say about some of the comments that were made, we can comment on the comments. But as long as we don't address questions to those individuals, we can do it after the meeting is closed, correct?
Well, you, you, no, you can, you can ask questions now if you want to ask questions. Once the public hearing is closed, you cannot at that point in time.
But we're, we can comment on what we have heard.
Absolutely.
Right, okay.
Once the public hearing is closed, there's only discussion between us as, as the elected officials.
Does that include staff also or?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? Do you want to close the public hearing or leave it open?
I'd start with me closing. I'm probably just closing.
I mean, and you never know. I mean, I'd prefer to keep it open, but you know, you sure we won't have any need to address anybody? And I don't have any questions at the moment. But that's not to say I won't, some, what something might pop in my head later down the road.
Well, the safe thing to do is to keep it open while you have your discussion. So, if you have a question, you can ask and get an answer.
Sure.
Okay. Then, discussion. Comments?
I mean, I thought it was a good idea to have the tax slightly higher on the beach front because, you know, you've always considered that they're going to benefit from the most. And, you know, it's, you know, it's interesting to me to see their point of view and they do have some good points. You know, a lot of people use their property and not supposed to. I can, you know, identify with that being really annoying and, you know, there's not much you can do about it. So, I understand that and that is a, that can be a problem, you know? They're paying all this extra tax and, you know, it's not really fair to them. But at the same time, where do you draw the line? I mean, we need that beach. Without the beach, there's, they're going to lose their house eventually and they're going to lose the beach road and so on and so forth, you know? We have to do something to stop the erosion. And, you know, it's unfortunate, but you guys are, you're right there. You know, I don't, I don't know what to tell you.
If there's people that are crossing the beach on private property, that's an enforcement issue and can very easily be addressed. Not that it would stop it necessarily, but it can be addressed with the, with the. Oh, it can be addressed with staff.
Yeah, I mean, I saw, I've seen the police on the beach over the summer. And, you know, maybe we might want to have them out there a little more often. I, I mean, I don't know.
It seems to me like a lot of the issues were in the taper zone. I, I've seen heads nodding. I, and, and I think that's, that's something that I don't, I don't know that I, I had paid. I, I had looked at it, but I don't know that that's something that I had really thought that much into. It does make a lot of sense. And I think that's something that we, we might need to maybe look at. I, I don't know, I, I think you're, that's something you're right. It's, especially if you're at the very end of the taper, it does make a difference than if you're at the top of the taper. So, but, but again, it's like Greg said, there's, every, there's got to be a taper. What you said, why, why the taper changed, I, that was, as you said before. Yeah, that's something we didn't do, so I don't know. I, you, you said something that I'm, I'm not sure of, that, that it, there wasn't a need for that. That's, again, something above my head. I'm not sure about that. That would be something we would, we would have to look at and, and address with something else. I don't have, that, that's not my area of expertise. But I, I do, I do think that no matter where the taper is, somebody's not going to be happy. So, at, whether, you know, whether it's here, whether it's here, whether it's here, if you've got to have one, you've got to have one. So, I, I, I hear your concerns and, and maybe that's something we, we need to, to look at.
Is it possible to lessen the tax rate for the taper area? I mean, is that something we can do?
The tax rate in the MSD has to be the same for all properties.
Okay.
And because of the taper makes them the MSD?
Right.
So, our hands are tied on that.
Well, let me clarify, the MSD is where you say it is.
So, in theory, we could take it out of the MSD.
We, we could take the tail into the taper.
Well, we, we need the taper.
No, 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 we could take the taper area out of the MSD.
Well, you run in, again, you run into an equity factor, be it the people that are paying.
Right.
That wouldn't be paid, if you're saying.
Yeah, they're still getting the benefits.
If you're saying that they shouldn't have to pay, for instance, but they're still getting a benefit, then that creates another issue.
Yeah.
Only a partial benefit.
Again, and you have to understand, we're, we're just, we're people just like y'all are. So, this is a learning process for us as well. And I've read this several times.
I know a lot of the comments were included statements about equity and the formula, the 33 cent versus the townwide 3 cent and how, how that figure was created. And so, to, to kind of go back and make sure we're all on the same page, the, some of the thought process behind creating that was first, the, shifting the greater tax burden directly to the oceanfront is because of the value that that sand has in protecting the property. We are fortunate that we're not in the situation that Kitty Hawk is in.
Yes.
They're moving forward with their beach nourishment project, but they're doing it really almost for a different reason than we're doing it. You know, we are trying to help protect the infrastructure along the, the, along the area that's being proposed to be nourished. Because we certainly recognize the overall economic impact that has, they're in a position now that, you know, their focus is not on protecting those oceanfront homes and that tax structure and base. It's how to mitigate the loss that they keep getting on just smaller storms because of all the flooding that's occurring in between the highways now and the devastation and the, the, you know, significant tax burn that it places when they have storms because of all the cleanup. And, you know, so when you look at how, you know, how the, the proposed rates came into being, that's part of it. The other part is, and, and you may call it or consider it inequity, but Kill Devil Hills is really home to the majority of the working class in the Outer Banks. A lot of people search out Kill Devil Hills because overall, we are known to be able to find houses that are more affordable than some of our neighboring towns for the working class. And it, it's not a matter of not caring about the opinion or the voices of those in the room, but it's also, our job as elected officials is to look at all of the constituents and the stakeholders. So, certainly, it's the folks that are here that, that have a voice, but it's also the folks that are working to provide the services. So, we can have a great place to come to. I do recognize that our taxes are higher than our, some of our neighboring towns, but we also have different services and more services. You know, we run animal control because we, years ago, didn't think that we were getting enough benefit from the county animal control. So, the board, years and years. So the board, years and years ago, invested in our own animal control so we could provide additional service. You know, we have our own fire EMS and with amazing response times because we invest heavily in those services. And that costs money and everyone shares in that. But while certainly I'm not looking to try to put people out of their homes on the oceanfront, I also have to respect that we can't put the working class out of homes that are in Killable Hills as well. And, you know, we do have a lot of the folks that are here, you know, the waitresses and waiters and housekeepers and those that are really helping keep the economic engine going, they live in our town. So, I mean, I share that. I don't think it's going to change anyone's opinion, other than just as far as kind of where we came with our thought process on how to formulate a model and given staff direction on how to come up with that model was based on that, yes, it could be perceived certainly as some inequity. I absolutely will stand behind, there is no conflict of interest whatsoever with where beach nourishment is being proposed. I don't have any interest in any hotels or businesses, you know, so. And, you know, my colleagues up here, I can, there's no self-interest in that. But as one of the commissioners already said, I mean, it's an environment that we have right now. Nobody likes tax increases at all, much less if theirs is significantly higher than someone else in the town. We are obligated by the statutory requirements defining what we can and can't do related to establishing the service districts. And that taper is a very catchy one because you're either, you're either including it and taxing it or you're not, you're not at all. Which is why right now the taper is in there and it's set as the same tax. The one thing, and I know I'm rambling, but the one thing that I would like some clarification on, if staff can provide that. The last gentleman that spoke, no, I'm sorry, the second to the last gentleman that spoke, Mr. Murray. Can someone help me understand the situation there with he has property on the other side?
Yes, ma'am. I can do that. What happened in, I think it was 1990?
Your mic, I think, there you go.
1990. I'm sorry, I'm not too close. Armand Muller and Betty Muller put a plat to record after the clay done washed in. Somebody had mentioned that earlier. And his statement in our office was that he did not want to see anybody else have the problems that he had and the heartache that he had when his building washed in. I think this board probably shares some of the same feelings about some of the northern properties that they referred to earlier. But, so what he did is he came to the town with a recombination plat that tied seven properties to the east, two seven properties to the west. One that Dirk Murray and myself talked about and then Mr. Roger Murray talked about earlier. And there's six other property owners that are involved with it. And what this did is it made them inseparable and it gave them one tax ID. And it tied them together and it made it still a non-conforming parcel. In the eyes of the town, we have a 15,000 square foot minimum and you need that much to have a conforming lot. Well, these are less than 15,000 square feet, even with the additional land to the east, so we can't take it out. I've looked at a lot of different ways to try to satisfy the concerns. We can't really remove those from those parcels to the west because they're tied to them and would make it more non-conforming if you tied, if you removed them and that would violate our ordinance. So to try to figure out an equitable way to remove those properties without taking the whole thing out of the district and then having a missing tooth in your beach nourishment area in the MSD. And I guess you could do that if that was the board's desire, I mean legally. I don't know that that's equitable and then you get to the taper question too. They're difficult, they're really difficult issues. But I don't know if I, did I answer your question?
You didn't say, I think what I understood, because I was wondering why they couldn't go the route of trying to get them separated. But you're saying that's not a possibility?
They would be, the lots are not conforming. They do not have 15,000 square feet today. And if you remove area from those lots, they would become more non-conforming. Just like you couldn't give your neighbor 25 feet of your lot unless you had.
25 to give.
25 feet to give them. Not the current ordinance.
So each of the.
The plat says it as well, Meredith reminded me, but, you know, just legally, it can't be done.
So each of the seven homeowners that are affected by this each have a 20-foot wide?
I think they're 29, 20 to 20.
It's 19 feet wide.
19 to 20 feet wide, maybe they are. And they're not buildable as they said.
What's the depth on those?
The depth, I'm saying it varies. I heard there was a 100-foot dune there and, you know, then there's a right of way that maybe goes into the dune. I'm not sure, sir.
Okay.
I'll call this gentleman up and let him speak.
Sure.
You can come up and speak now, introduce yourself.
Me too.
My name is Dirk Murray, Raymond Murray's son. Property at 2028, one of those seven properties that have that 20-foot path over there. And if you take the formula right now and tax all of us, you're definitely getting almost twice the amount of tax for the same square footage. I'm not a mathematician, but I came up with some sort of formula where you could, if you could build four houses over there, then you might be able to use that as a basis to tax us on. So the four parcels divided by the seven of us owners would come out to be about a 57, 58% tax. Whereas everyone else in this city would be taxed at the 100%, which is the .33 on $100. We would be only taxed at the 58%. And it would make it at least fair as far as the, as your plan goes, your, whatever you call that, that stretch there. So.
I'm not sure I'm following you, I'm sorry.
Well, we have 20 feet across and there's seven of us. And it's not buildable. But if you were allowed to build over there, you'd only be able to put like four houses over there. So if you would just, you know, divide that into the four parcels and then come up with that type of a tax rate, then it makes it fairer that, you know, our neighbor across the street is only being taxed, you know, for what he has. But we do have a path that comes down through there and people on the street horizontal to us, Raymond Street, New Bern Street, all those folks come right down our path and then up over the dune. So they're definitely benefiting from, you know, this nourishment project and we are too, but we're the ones that are having to pay that big, that big chunk of change. And the folks over there are just at 3%, or 3 cents. So I just would ask you to take that in consideration of somehow lower, prorating our taxes over there. Thank you.
Could I have 30 seconds to clarify?
We have other folks who, if you've already spoken, we're not going to call you back up at this time unless the council has a question for you.
Greg, just to follow up, the seven lots are contiguous. So if I'm doing my math correctly, seven times, seven lots times 19 feet is only 133 feet wide. 100-foot depth still doesn't have a buildable lot. So even if we combined them somehow. I'm just trying to figure out where we were coming up with potential for homeowner, home sites. When we can't, honestly, I don't think we can build one.
You'd have to satisfy the camera rules to do that anyway.
Yeah.
And then would it be a buildable lot, 15,000? I didn't, I didn't really look at it in that way because I didn't think you could do it. Didn't think you could release it. And then, then there's the equity problem about the municipal service district, if it's in the district. It's in the district.
We don't have the, we do not have the flexibility of charging any entity or any parcel in the municipal service district a different rate than any, it's a plat. So we don't have that flexibility.
Answer my question.
If you take it out, it's out.
Right.
There it is.
And so are those corresponding property or on the other side.
And we have to have a tapered part of the project.
Absolutely, yes.
And I'll say, I completely understand the heartache and the thought process of the increase in tax rate of everybody in here, whether it be 33 cent, whether it be 3 cent. I don't know how many people have followed this all along. I'll be the first to say, everybody sitting up here already knows, I voted against beach nourishment. I'll go on record as saying that. And my only reason for doing that was the tax increase. We do have the working poor here. We do have a lot of people who are in that middle class. And my fear was that if we did beach nourishment at this particular point in time, that it was going to increase, it was going to, it was going to impact people to the point that they were not going to be able to live here. And I stated that at that time and I still fully believe that. So I, it's not that I, that we're not hearing, everybody up here hears your concerns. It's just trying to find an equitable way to make this work and to find the people who are going to benefit the most and to not make those individuals who are living and working in Killable Hills not be able to do that anymore because we are a very large municipality. And we're a great municipality and we really don't want to see that change. And I don't think at this point that most of y'all want to see beach nourishment not happen, especially those of y'all living on the beach. I just, I think we're, it's the lesser of the evils at this point. It's, I'm, I'm just, I'm heartbroken both ways, so I, that's all I can say.
If you haven't spoken yet and you want to speak, you can come up and speak. Come up and identify yourself.
I'm Betsy Birdsong, I live on Winsong Way. And this is not directly on the oceanfront. So I would like the consideration of changing it because we were not on oceanfront. We're like ocean side, like our neighbors across the street. So just want to clarify that. Do you understand?
No.
Winsong Way is the only cul-de-sac in Killable Hills.
Okay, okay, okay.
So we're not, there's just a few houses, only eight homes and we're not oceanfront.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Was there someone else who wanted to speak? Come up and identify yourself, please.
My name's Dana Reese, my husband spoke earlier. But I guess I really think it's totally unfair that you're just taxing a few people when everybody in the town benefits and all the visitors and the people who rent. They all benefit for the beach. Now, I'm one that you would think would really want beach nourishment and I might be willing to pay something for it. But everybody uses my beach, it's not just my beach. I have to get people out from under my house all the time. They walk through the driveway, they sit on the steps, you know, they do everything. And to me, that seems unfair, that you're going to tax us at such a high rate when everybody uses our beach. It's not our private beach by any means. I don't understand why you couldn't do a little bit of tax for everybody. All the businesses here benefit from the beach, all the people. So couldn't you raise money for beach nourishment by just increasing the tax a little bit? But for a larger number of people? Well, I didn't do the math, but some people have and they've said a lot of what I'm saying, I guess, too. But it really is true about people abusing your property. And you really don't feel like paying a whole lot when it's, you don't feel like it's really your property. You kind of have to fight for it.
Thank you, Ms. Reese.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, come up and speak.
Hello, I'm Carolyn Gard, my husband spoke earlier. Your own engineers have said that from Tanya South, we don't need the beach nourishment. We've gotten along fine for many, many years, watching the ebb and flow of the beach. And we don't need the nourishment. And it seems so unfair for us to be taxed at this exorbitant rate when it's the whole town, all the tourists, the people, we are right next to a beach access. So we see the number of people that come day in and day out all summer long and use the beach. For the most part, those of us who've spoken don't use the beach ourselves. If we do, like Charlie Hinton said, you have to go out really early in the morning to reserve your space or you, you have to walk a long way to find a place to put your towel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gard.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, come up and identify yourself. Bringing out the shy people.
My name is Jean Winton and I also live on Winsong Way, which is the only cul-de-sac in Killable Hills. I have eight neighbors who are not oceanfront. My wife and I are retired here, we are citizens of North Carolina and Killable Hills. And I'm just a, some gentleman said probably ago how old he was. Well, I'm older than anybody else in this room. And I, if anybody needs a senior discount, I do. But anyway, please consider that distribution of the, of the cost of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last calls, is there anyone else? All right, come up and identify yourself.
I hate to put a damper on all the Winsong Way people, but I live on Winsong too, that one cul-de-sac.
Your name, please?
I'm sorry, it's Ann Sigaloff. I own a house that's on the beach, my son lives there permanently, so it's been 20 years that we've been there. I don't think there's anybody that lives in Killable Hills that doesn't want the beach replenishment. I think it's the equity it may be. My, I've lost 94 feet in 12 years. So anybody that says that we haven't lost beach down there hasn't looked at the aerial photographs because we have. I don't want to lose my home, it's my life's investment, it's my children's inheritance and I really don't want to lose it. But I also think there is an inequity that we've discussed. Everybody in this community benefits from the beach and may never use the beach and we understand that. But the 33 versus the 3 is really just, it, a gentleman here in our neighborhood has said, you know, the 2 cent rule, 2 cents or even 1 cent, move it one way or the other, you have the ability to do that. And I really do think just a look at where that number falls would be very, very helpful. I have people that take showers on my deck that I've never met in my life and put their lawn chairs on my porch. So, and you know what, it's part of the deal, but to pay a house that is on the ocean, my tax rate is very high and it's fine, I'll pay all day long. I'll pay another $10 a day, all day long for what I have there, but I don't want to lose it. But I do think it's somewhat unfair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come up and identify yourself, please.
My name's Skip Jones, I'm resident of Derek County, Killable Hills since mid 70s. My name's Skip Jones. I'm resident of Dare County, Kill Devil Hills since mid-seventies. And I don't live on the ocean. But, you know, I would have to tend to agree with some of what I've heard tonight. I really feel like the tax, the property values are going to increase for the oceanfront people that do get that increased protection, basically. I mean, I don't think we need beach nourishment desperately. There is a big difference from three to thirty-three. I've got to go along with that argument. I think y'all would have a really hard time making a decision tonight after you've heard this. So, my only recommendation might be to give it a little bit more time for consideration. I don't know what kind of timeframe we're on with the other towns. And I know we're trying to work together with Kitty Hawk and was it Duck, maybe? But anyway, there's been some great points made tonight. You know, I don't want my taxes to go up, but I don't want to... I've seen the beach dwindle. I live just west of First Street over by the Sound. And I live there for a reason. But we're in the trees. We're protected. But I have lived on the ocean all winter before. So, I've seen it. But I personally think it might require a little bit more discussion after hearing these points tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Skip.
Thanks.
All right, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Last call. I think we've exhausted them.
Legal, I don't know if it's a legal question. I'm sure it's a legal question. In establishing the district, is there any flexibility? I mean, it's one thing to establish the district, but does that have to be tied with the exact amount at the same time of the vote?
You mean the tax rate?
Yes.
No, you will set your tax rate when you do your budget.
So, that is...
That's an entirely separate issue.
The tax rate even... So, this truly just defines the district, and we can look at if that was the... Will we... We could look if there was, if there was any flexibility.
That's correct. That's an entirely different issue. You're not deciding that tonight.
It's not always linked in the table.
Or deciding tonight or the boundaries of your district.
I was wondering that as well because it doesn't mention the actual numbers.
Right. It's just what we have calculated. That's the formula that we've been using thus far was based on those figures.
Right.
But by establishing the MSD, it's not establishing a tax rate.
Right.
Right. Yeah, we had to... Well, if we didn't throw a tax rate out there, you probably may not have come out because you didn't realize how it would potentially impact you. Sorry.
So, we can still go ahead with this, but then look at the tax rate later down the line?
Yeah, on our budget.
Our next few meetings.
Yeah.
Sooner than later.
Sooner than later. And it is really important to stay... Certainly, it doesn't trump the importance of, you know, taking into consideration all of the comments and relooking at numbers. But there is a significant benefit of keeping the Kill Devil Hills, the Duck, and the Kitty Hawk projects aligned and on the same timeline. There's a significant savings for cost mobilization and whatnot. Both of those towns have already approved their and established their districts, their MSDs. We're still fine, but it's not a matter of you wait, and then we can sit several months and toy with this. We need to work on it right away.
Are you ready to close the public hearing?
Y'all ready to close the public hearing?
Yes. All right, then I declare the public hearing closed at this time.
I think it's... I was trying to flip back through some of the notes I wrote as people were speaking. The, you know, we... You guys, please correct me if I'm saying something that is not the case for you, but when we've been discussing beach nourishment from day one, actually, for some people, it's been ten-plus years that we've been discussing this. And certainly, in light of what's happened in Nag's Head, beach nourishment isn't just a one-time, one-and-done investment. So, there would be re-nourishment projects. And, you know, those would be evaluated based on what the outcome, what happens between now. Typically, they say, you know, re-nourishment sometime five to seven years after the initial project.
Depending.
It really, there's, yeah, there's so many variables that play into that. But I think we've always... It's always been indicated to us in the discussions that this isn't just a one-time, sit down on the beach and walk away.
And there again, we discuss taxes and budget every year. So,
Right.
It wouldn't necessarily, if we did need something in five to seven years, it wouldn't be the same as whatever we decide now necessarily.
Right. That would be looked at every year that we prepare a budget, what our tax rates need to be to cover. Yes. Let's see, trying to look at a couple of the other comments. Does anyone else have any other comments, anything to add?
Commissioner Pitt told me when I first got elected that there by the Black Pelican, Black Pelican actually used to be on the beach. And it was a lifeguard station, but that was in Kitty Hawk. And past Black Pelican was the boats that they stored to go out and rescue people. And past that was the softball field. Closer down towards us at the trailer park in Kitty Hawk, a friend of mine's running that place. And he told me he's got pictures of a golf cart track on the beach. So, Kitty Hawk has lost a lot of sand. And I don't want that to happen to us. So, I mean, I think it's really important that we do move forward with this beach nourishment, but we might want to look at the tax coming up.
Yeah, I saw pictures of the area up there where you're talking about. And seaward of where the Black Pelican is now, there was a softball field on the flat beach.
Right.
And it went out for, I have heard, anywhere from three to five hundred feet. And it was similar from there on down. And since then, as we all know, if we go up there now, there's long stretches of beach there where there's no houses.
Yeah.
In Kitty Hawk, that means there's no taxes. And for the people that were there, they don't have, no longer have their homes. And similar situation, obviously, as we all know, in South Nag's Head, I don't even know the number of homes that were lost there. Dozens, I think, at least. And, you know, I would like, I would hate to see that happen to anyone here. And if we didn't take some action and that did, I think it would be on us right now.
Right.
And in spite of what some people might think, there's no ethics violations, there's no conflict of interest because I live in the three-cent area. That had nothing to do with it. I'd pay a lot more if that was the consensus of the board and of the town and of staff recommendations and the price of the project and everything else. But I don't think there's anything untoward about anything that we have done. And I think I could probably speak, in this case, I think I can speak for the others, too. So, the... Whether or not we discuss the tax, whether it's going to change from what we have it right now is a matter for discussion. But whether or not we decide to do it, in my opinion, is not a matter of discussion. I mean, for me, it's, my decision has been made on this for quite some time.
Any other comments? And I'd just, for the sake of addressing a couple of other things that were brought up, just from procedurally how we operate, so no one thinks that some of the things they've seen are any different than how we normally operate our business. When the agenda's prepared and the supporting documents are put in the packet for us, it's always dated the date of the meeting because that's when we're actually going to be conducting the business. So, there wasn't, there's nothing funny about a memo being dated today that was released before because it's dated the day that we're actually convening as a board to take action or look at an item. The other thing about recommendations, you'll also find it's consistent with how we operate, that we want staff and expect staff to provide their recommendation when they're submitting an agenda item to us. That does not mean that it's a, you know, a rubber stamp that we're always going to follow staff recommendation. But we do expect that to be there because they have spent time looking at issues and studying them. And we've charged them and tasked them with providing us the details and their expert professional opinions. So, again, I just raise that because procedurally, what's in the packet related to this and how things were put out in the public is consistent with the way that we do operate in this town. It's also consistent with most other government entities, whether it's municipalities or counties. So, I just wanted to share that with everyone so they hopefully feel reassured that there is nothing different in the way that this is being presented to anyone tonight. So... If there's no further comments, though, or discussion by the board, we probably have reached the time to, for someone to make a motion of the direction they want to head.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution establishing and creating the Kill Devil Hills Beach Erosion Control and Flood and Hurricane Works Municipal Service District as presented.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Are there's in favor of establishing the MSD? Motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And for all of you that came out, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. You certainly don't have to. But I think, basically, there seemed to be some consensus through the discussion that we would have further discussion on the tax rate as we move forward to our budgeting process. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks to everybody that spoke.
Especially for those that came from other towns.
Thank you.
We'll give it a second to clear out, and then we'll move on to public comment. Okay, we will call the meeting back to order. And we will move on to... Actually, we have public comment first. Lee, I see you guys there. We do have a public comment time set on the agenda before introductions and presentations. And this is the time set aside. There's two opportunities tonight for public comment. It's the time set aside for anyone to speak on any topic that they wish to bring before the board. We have a lot of names on the sign-up sheet, but I'm thinking most of them may not still be here. Phil from Gulfstream, I don't see anyone.
No.
No one else from Gulfstream. Is anyone still here from Virginia Dare Trail? It's the easiest way to go. Okay, then Donnie, where do you? Welcome, Donnie. And when you speak at public comment, it's kind of the same thing. If you would try to keep your comments to three minutes, just for the sake of the time, but also introduce yourself by name and address, please. So, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Donnie King, owner of Ocean Boulevard Restaurant, Kitty Hawk, and founder of a group called Better Beaches OBX. I am an advocate of proactive beach maintenance, which in some cases includes beach nourishment as a necessary first step. I'm thrilled that Duck and Kitty Hawk have signed on to this project, and I commend you in doing so as well, including the tax plans. And, you know, in recognition that the beach is a vital part of our economic and physical infrastructure, all across the nation, people debate as to how to repair various forms of our infrastructure, from roads to bridges to electrical grids. They argue about paying for it. The savings presented by the inter-local agreement and Dare County's occupancy tax collections make this a great opportunity. While nobody likes to pay more taxes without this specific opportunity, the necessary project could easily be a lot more costly. I appreciate you moving forward. I had written something big to try to convince, you know, the whole town that this needed to be done, but it seemed like more, some things just need to be considered tax-wise in regards to some of the properties that just, you know, fit oddly into the mix. I think it would help if some people understood more, kind of what we went through up on the northern beaches in regard to the municipal service districts because there's just a tight way. There's only certain ways that, and certain laws that allow us to accomplish these sort of projects. And that's where a lot of the debate came from today in regards to the taper in Winsong and, you know, the unique properties with the east and west orientation. But to sum it up, you know, I appreciate you taking action today. And I look forward to how this project moves along in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie.
Thank you very much.
Jack McCombs? Hey, Jack.
Jack McCombs, nine seventeen Cedar Drive. I've come before you before to talk about cycling. I'm going to do it again tonight. Don't let your eyes glaze over. Commissioners, madam, doctor, mayor. Trying to figure out how to address you. In this forum, we'll say mayor. I want to relate to incidents that I was involved in about cycling. Several weeks ago, I was on my bike, was traveling on Collington Road East. I was about three hundred yards from the intersection with one fifty-eight. A motorist came by me at forty to forty-five miles an hour, and he passed so close to me, it nearly brushed my elbow. And he was moving really fast. It scared me a lot. And I'm sure if I'd have been a less experienced cyclist, I could have gone down. He wasn't the sharpest pencil in the box because he ran into the traffic light. And one of the few occasions wherein I've been harassed, he had to stop, and I rode up to him, kept my cool because I understand the law and I'm not going to do something untoward with him. I thought perhaps he just lost attention, and he didn't realize how close he was to me. When I pulled up next to him, I tapped on his, the passenger window. He ignored me at first, and then he pulled the window down. And he said, "You should be off the street." And I said, "Sir, I have a perfect right to be here by North Carolina law." And he said, "You get off this street. You have no rights at all. Get up on the bike path." I knew right then that he passed me deliberately as close as he could to scare me off that road. I took his license plate down, and I sent our good chief of police an email telling him exactly what happened, the time it had happened, and the license plate. And I got a beautiful response from him. Chief, where is the good chief? There. Well, his response went to every cyclist in the Outer Banks, and he is now the most popular police chief in the Outer Banks. He sent one of his good officers down to talk to this young man because he obviously was very ignorant of the law, and he was obviously very ignorant that he could have killed me. He just didn't realize the danger. And when I reported it to the chief, I did not want him prosecuted. I wanted him, I wanted him to be educated. That was the first incident. Second incident, I was in the YMCA in the men's locker room talking to another Kill Devil Hills resident who's also an avid cyclist. And we're just talking about cycling in the Outer Banks. There was another gentleman in the locker room that we didn't know. And he walked over and he said, "Why are people in this town so against cyclists?" He said, "This is the most miserable people I have ever experienced as a cyclist." And he said, "I'm from Madison, Wisconsin, and I have never experienced a population that is so opposed to cycling." And I assured him that wasn't the case, that we did have a few problems, but that was not the case. The point I want to get across to you, at some time, I get very frustrated because many of our residents do not understand the financial impact that cycling has on the Outer Banks. In the study, and I've told you this before, that was done twelve years ago, at that time, it was amounting to at least sixty million dollars a year. It's at least doubled that now. And if we make this an unpopular place for cyclists, we are shooting the goose that lays the golden egg right in the head. And I just want to bring that to your attention to make sure you understand, there's a lot more at stake than a few guys and girls in tight cycling clothing pedaling around on the streets. A lot more at stake. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
The other names that were on the signup sheet appear to probably, to be people that were likely here from the public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? If so, just raise your hand. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Thank you both for commenting and being here, and for the work, Donnie, that you're doing with your organization too. Thank you.
Thank you. It was good to hear that.
And Jack, I know you speak at our meetings periodically about this. Do you happen to also go to any of the other town councils? I mean, I know you're a KDH resident, so you have kind of an alignment here, but I wonder if you have, or bless you, or anyone from the cycling...
On occasion, NAGC, but I haven't been to...
Okay. I'm just thinking, another way to reach more people as well, because hearing a personal story, or a personal experience, you know, just sometimes hits home.
Well, there's one point I want to make, too. Like the gentleman who spoke earlier from North Virginia Dare, I'm 75, too, and I have no intention of not riding my bicycle.
Good for you.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, let's move on to introductions and presentations, and welcome. Tim Cafferty is here, and Lee Nettles, they're here from the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau to share a presentation with us. Welcome, gentlemen.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. I call her Personnel Chair, Mary Davies. Thank you. Greetings from the Tourism Board. I'm a little disappointed some of the folks left, because we have some information here. I was thinking you would pack the room for us to give a good tourism report, but we do have a stewardship report. First time in a long time this has been done. It's one of the things I felt very strongly about when I became chairman of the Tourism Board, to reach out to each of the six towns, as well as the county and the individual organizations that make up our Tourism Board, to let you know what we do. I am the 25th Chairman of the Tourism Board this year, and I'm the Realtor representative, and so, very proud to be here. And I'm also awed, as I look back at history, as we're talking about history, I grew up in Kitty Hawk. I remember playing football east to west, east to west at the four mile post, so I'm with you there. But the wisdom that set up this Tourism Board in 1990, the group that got together and put that enabled legislation in place to, to, you know, promote what is the lifeblood of our economy. And as we move on with the presentation here, we have a real balance, I think was very wise as we started. As I said, I'm the Chairman of the Tourism Board, and you see Susie Walters from NAGC is our Vice Chair, Nancy Cavanagh from Duck is our Secretary, Dory Fuller from the Chamber of Commerce is our Treasurer, Irvin Bateman from Kitty Hawk is our Assistant Treasurer, and as I mentioned, Sheila Davies is our Personnel Chair. The first six names on there are what we call the Steering Committee for the Tourism Board, sort of like the Executive Committee, if you will. And the remainder of our board consists of Tanya Cohen, right over here at the Days Inn from the Hotel Motel Association. Ernie Foster's a member at large. We have two at-large members, at least one of which may be from Hatteras, or must be from Hatteras. And this year, we actually have two, because Ernie is from Hatteras Village, and he's our first commercial fisherman on the, on the board, and he brings a neat perspective on that as well. Leo Holland from Southern Shores, Nancy Cavanagh, as I mentioned, from Hatteras Island. She has a store in Frisco there. Donnie King, our own Donnie King, right here, from the Restaurant Association. And so, we have Wally Overman from the Commissioners, and Martha Wicker from Manio. So, this is your Tourism Board this year. And there's been a good, a good amount of discussion about occupancy tax and taxes, and I know where your sand's going. Oregon Inlet, we have had some talking about that over time. And, you know, what's a, what's a presentation without some sort of an org chart or a flow? And this really answers some of the questions that some of the folks had here. Difficult for me to see, but you can, as you look at the top there, you see our sales tax distribution. To the right is where the, the tax, of course, the accommodations, I am an innkeeper, if you will, I charge 12.75% tax to our folks that come here and enjoy our beaches, and 6.75 is sales tax. You see the distribution there, as you follow the bubbles to the right. And then to the left is our occupancy tax, or was referred to as a bed tax earlier. And it does have a very clear distribution. As you see, it goes to the municipalities. We also have, 2% of that tax goes to beach nourishment. 1% was in place for many years, and just two years ago, we upped the tax by additional percent to, to help fund projects like what we've been talking about tonight. And then only 1% of that goes to the operation of the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, the Dare County Tourism Board. And then the blue below is the Prepared Meals Tax, which has a similar split with 1% as well going there for tourism promotion here on the Outer Banks. So, as we talk, I remember back to my, my sporting days, you know, there's no I and team, but there is a me. And so, what's in it for me, when you talk about occupancy tax? And correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the mathematics we've come up with for Kill Devil Hills specifically. What's in it for you in the occupancy tax realm? And you see there, that if not for occupancy tax revenue, to maintain the same standards and flow of cash that you used to, there's the actual cent increase that would take for Kill Devil Hills to continue to render the services that you outlined so appropriately there. So, we've had a very long and cooperative history with Kill Devil Hills over time, including most recently, the fireworks last year, and then just last Monday at the Commissioners' meeting, we were approved to fund $10,000 towards this year's fireworks display, so good on that. And also, the multi-use connector, $80,250, I think was just appropriated for that as well. And so, as we, as we move along, you know, before that, I, this is actually my second stint on the Tourism Board. 12 years ago, I was here as well, and I look back and see, we funded other things. Jack, the Centennial Bike Path, $150,000 towards that here in the town. Raleigh Avenue Beach Access was another one. East Fifth Street Sidewalk System, the Bay Drive Bicycle Path, and the most recent one back in 2010, in the fiscal 2009, 2010, the First Street Multi-Use Path. And certainly, as you look around the town, it's hard to argue that quality of life is not impacted by occupancy tax, and certainly, all of us benefit from that. And I don't know why I got the math portion of the presentation, but I do have a lot of statistics here, as you see. It's interesting, the Department of Commerce gives us feedback about economic impact of tourism. And this past year, in 2014, we actually had $414 million in lodging revenue in Dare County alone. Another 200-plus million in meals revenue. And so, that's three-quarters of a billion dollars, in my rough math from Manio High School, back in the day. But here, it tells us the economic impact includes jobs and the other things that go along with tourism, and almost a billion dollars in the last year they gave us statistics for, which is 2013. And it's interesting for me to note, with counties in the state, like Mecklenburg, Wake, Guilford, New Hanover, Moore County where Pinehurst is, or Buncombe County, three of those counties rank behind Dare County in, in, you know, the 100 counties that there are in the state with regard to tourism. We're an important cog, and obviously, over the 11,000 jobs, more than one in three people directly employed by tourism. And so, as we look at the tax revenue that goes to the state, and we matriculate that back to the Outer Banks and particularly those of us here in Dare County, to maintain the same quality of life and the standards that we've come to see, it would mean an additional nearly $2,500 in tax for each resident of this county to maintain what we have. So, as we look along here, you will see the specifics for Kill Devil Hills as well, and in relation to the county. And I'm gonna have to come around here and kind of look. You have the cheat sheets, maybe that? You see the graphs there, and I mentioned my previous stint on the Tourism Board some 12 years ago. You see, it's been a steady increase going toward the right, as far as the revenues that have, have been in place, you know, the, the steady increase. I think we call that hockey stick growth for tourism and meals. So, as you look up in the upper-left corner, the little gray box there of Dare County occupancy, year over year, we grew by 4% and 34% growth over the last 10 years. The meals over the last year, a 5.2% year-over-year growth, and 25% growth in meals over that same 10-year period. And if you look at the box down on the lower left, you see Kill Devil Hills occupancy has actually outpaced and nearly doubled the county in terms of your growth, year-over-year, 8.5% occupancy growth in Kill Devil Hills, and 42% since '06. Now, the meals are slightly down at .1, but the good news for Kill Devil Hills is you dominate the meals market in terms of, you know, where people eat. And so, it's a very mature market, and so, there have been some, you know, we, we look at this stuff every month, as Sheila can attest to, as a board member, we have a budget report, and we look at these things, and we look at little, you know, little trends and tweaks in the month after month. So, we're not always sure about why, you know, we have a decrease over $100,000 over this town and that, and then we get into the minutia of, well, this restaurant is closed, and, well, we have a new restaurant here, and those kinds of things. So, that's, that's the kind of thing you're seeing there, but still, very strong, and nothing to really be too greatly concerned about. So, again, my second stint on the Tourism Board, it's been a very good run. It's been a challenging year so far with things like occupancy tax and sales tax distribution, redistribution, if you will, Oregon Inlet, and offshore drilling. We're gonna hear about that as well. But not sure what the future holds, but two things are for sure, and one is that I remind everyone I can think of, I have five children, and everybody in my house knows we don't use the T-word. These people aren't tourists, they are guests, and that is a very important word and term to use, in that we can invite them to come, but they don't have to come, and they don't necessarily ever have to come back. So, we always remember that, certainly in my house. If you don't remember, you get time out. And it is, the other thing to remember is it is an extremely competitive market in tourism. I have a vacation rental firm, not doing a commercial for that, but I train the folks who answer the phone to never forget that our competition may not be XYZ Realty down the street, or a hotel, or whatever. Our competition may be Disney World, it may be Hot Springs, Arkansas, it may be a cruise. And so, promotion is critical to making sure we don't ever lose sight of that. And to do that, I'm gonna hand off the last few minutes here to the man who is a master promoter, Mr. Lee Nettles.
Thank you, Tim. Mary Davies, Board of Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come before you this evening and, and share some news with you. I, I kind of had a chart fetish, so I don't know why I gave him the charts either. But anyhow, we appreciate your time, and we appreciate having an opportunity to be here. Tim spoke with you about Dare County tourism and some about Kill Devil Hills tourism. I'd like to speak with you for a few minutes about the work of the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau. I left it each of your spots. Recent newsletter, this is also available to the public off our website, outerbanks.org, has some, some of the information I'll share with you tonight, and then, then some additional. Now, in terms of the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that we do. We, last year, for your information and consideration, we saw more than 2.5 million visits to the website, outerbanks.org. We continue to be a leading referrer, if not the main referrer, for most of our travel partners here in the Outer Banks, Dare County's Outer Banks, to clarify that. We also, last year, distributed 425,000 copies of our printed travel guide. This is distributed as our main fulfillment piece. Whenever anybody calls and inquires about the area and requests more information, this is sent out. It's also distributed through AAA Centers in east of the Mississippi State Welcome Centers, as well as our own four local welcome centers, where we also hosted 115,000 people in our four welcome centers last year. In terms of social media, that's where a lot of our growth is, that's where a lot of the dynamic nature of travel and tourism and travel purchases are happening. And Facebook for us has, has experienced tremendous growth. We're at 600,000 people for a Facebook audience now. In the span of five short years, we've grown our Facebook audience from 60,000 to 600,000. So, tremendous growth there. We also have active Twitter account, Pinterest, Instagram. We added recently a Tumblr blog on our website, so if you aren't subscribed to that or dialed into it, please stop by outerbanks.org and, and check it out. Another area of remarkable growth for us has been with our email database. These are people that have actively requested more information about the Outer Banks. They've given us permission to send them more information. We've grown that list to over 460,000 people. So, between Facebook and our email subscribers alone, we're now reaching more than a million people. So, we're communicating with these folks very frequently. It's efficient to do so, very effective. Word of mouth is such a big part of our business, and social media and email allows us to do that. Meanwhile, as a destination marketing organization, a DMO, we face extremely frequent and fierce competition. It's a dynamic marketplace as well. The other day, I read an article that the Priceline Group and Expedia, Inc., two holding companies that, in their stable, they have Priceline and Expedia, of course, but also Hotwire, Trivago, Kayak, big brands like that. Nonetheless, these two holding companies, last year, spent more than $4 billion in advertising alone. And now, you might think that, that we don't compete with Expedia or Priceline or any of those guys, but I would say that we, we definitely do. Anytime that a prospective visitor goes to one of those websites and is exposed to information about a different destination, or advertisements about a different destination, we run a grave risk of losing that person as, as a guest. So, we do compete. I would also have you consider that the average travel purchaser visits more than 20 websites before making a final decision. So, that's a lot of, a lot of eyeballs moving all over the place. The globe is at your fingertips, you have a lot of options as a, as a visitor. Then, we can't forget about all the other DMOS that are out there, all the other destinations that would love to have our guests, to call them their own. Myrtle Beach, for instance, outspends us 10 to 1 in terms of advertising. They spend $20 million annually. We spend around $2 million annually. But we do have a secret weapon, and that is the fact that people just love it here. They love it here, we can't take it for granted for a second, though, but they do love it here. I direct your attention to one of the ads from our recent campaign in our state magazine, where we try and really kind of capture that essence and the deeper connection that people feel for the area. We think that it's a soul-stirring connection. So, Stir the Soul is kind of the theme line for these ads. And you will see it play out in a variety of print applications here. Print is a pretty significant portion of our budget. Online is the majority of our spending, though. That's where a lot of the consideration and travel purchases are taking place. And then, we also, that looks like a great place to visit, doesn't it? We also do a pretty significant amount of television. We're wrapping up a spring television buy that's run in the Raleigh-Durham market, the Tidewater area, hopefully, you've seen some of the commercials recently. Greenville, New Bern, Washington, also in North Carolina, and then cable in the Washington, DC area, Pittsburgh, and Philly areas. And with any luck, this will play for us.
We have a basic human need, to feel connected, to nature, to the idea of something bigger, to one another. The Outer Banks of North Carolina, a chain of barrier islands shaped by wind and water, connected by the elements, just open spaces, and endless possibilities.
And we live here, you know? For all the, for all the heartache and occasional inconveniences, what a, what an incredible place to live. We're honored and proud to be able to market it to folks. Now, by nature of what we are and how we're created and the people on our board, we serve as a tourism advocate, an industry, an industry advocate. And as such, we've been involved in a couple of initiatives recently. This is a page that we created on our website to try and help people get to the Outer Banks faster. We tried to approach it from a positive rather than a negative. We're talking about a few Saturdays within the summer, so it's important that we kind of frame this properly for folks, too. This page also has three different alternate routes, depending on whether you're coming through or from Richmond, or along the eastern shore and down. So, those maps are available as links. If you click on them with your smartphone, it'll load directly into your phone. You don't have to do anything else. It'll tell you how to get here, take advantage of those routes, which may add a few miles, but as we all know, they can save you several hours. And we're also encouraging Friday and Sunday check-ins as well. So, those are available to the town and our travel partners, and would encourage you to take advantage, whoa, take advantage of those. That's the event site, but we're not quite there yet. This is something that was mentioned earlier, a little bit of work that we did with regard to oil and gas and the prospect of oil wells off of our shore for natural gas and oil. We have an existing travel and tourism industry here. The red and green lines over there... Whoop. Oh, boy. Yeah, I can't really do it. The red and green lines represent travel and tourism. The green line is, are the eight Ocean contiguous counties. The red line are the 20 coastal counties in North Carolina. We plotted out, went back as far as we could with the Department of Commerce information... We plotted out, went back as far as we could with the Department of Commerce information to show actual spending. We had other charts for jobs and tax revenue as well. And we compared it to the information from the oil and gas zone research study, and a couple of things became clear immediately. You can see that travel and tourism today equals or beats the medium and low projections for oil and gas off to the right, 21 years from now. And one of the other things that's noteworthy is just how wildly the estimates vary from low, medium, and high with travel, or with oil and gas. And then, finally, building a trend line off of the actual experience that we've seen for travel and tourism, you see that 21 years from now, actually, we're pretty comparable with even the highest estimate for oil and gas. So, with a proven industry such as travel and tourism, and one that poses such a threat in oil and gas, we felt like it was very important for everybody to be equipped and armed with dollars and cents, jobs, real information, and to be able to compare and understand what's at risk. And, of course, we would advocate for the tourism industry and do not believe that that risk is worth taking. The last item is the Outer Banks Event Site. If you've ridden by the site, and, as I said, you've seen, there's a whole lot of activity going on out there. We're nearing the completion of Phase 1. It's a four-phase development plan, but the way it was designed, each phase stands on its own, so we don't have to get to the subsequent ones to have full enjoyment and use of the event site. So, Phase 1 is slated to be done May 25, and we have an event scheduled for May 31. So, it's going to be a great, going to be a great site, and I think a real asset to the Outer Banks. The areas in red are later phases, and one of the red boxes on the north is for an eventual plan for an open-air pavilion. But, as I say, we'll have development, we'll have very enjoyable event areas and a beautiful site for everybody's use. Thank you very much for your time and interest.
Any questions for Lee or Tim?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Thanks, it was very nice.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Our meetings are open to the public, you're welcome to attend anytime. This month's meeting is at Mr. King's Restaurant in Kitty Hawk, so come and see us.
Thank you both for your leadership.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Great work. The, as they were sharing one of the slides, the occupancy tax and what that means to Kill Devil Hills, I think we had a little bit of discussion of this at the last meeting about why that, when the legislation was proposed, that would shift basically control of that occupancy tax to the county, why that was such a pertinent issue to the towns to be involved in protecting that, because, you know, the thought of losing that and what that would mean to our citizens as far as what their taxpayers, you know, going up 10 cents just to maintain where we are, to come back from that, is just significant. So, anyway, great, thank you. Okay, and I actually had a note under the mayor's agenda to share with you all, that it was approved for our fireworks, that we did get full approval for that, so we appreciate, thank you for...
Thank you for that.
For that as well.
Awesome.
Look forward to another great year. Okay, let's move on then to old business. Under old business, we have one item this evening, which is beach driving. If you all recall, the last time we spoke about this, we had shared that NAGS Head was looking at the possibility of establishing a reciprocal agreement with us, where we would each honor one another's permits for driving. And on April 1, the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners did approve doing that. Kind of where we are now would be to, assuming we want to go in that direction, have our attorney work with NAGS Head's attorney to start really fleshing out the language. The other thing is, one of, I'm not sure which one of you, but one of the coaches brought up about, do we need to hold a public hearing on this? And while we don't have to, I think the recommendation was, maybe we should, because, maybe it was, I'm sure I have one, just because it could be a sensitive issue. One of the things that we have the opportunity of doing, just based on the timeline, is, you know, we're going to promote our April 29 Public Forum, is that we could use that in the marketing of that event, or event of that meeting, to encourage folks to come talk to us about where we're, the direction we're headed with beach driving, which would then put us in a position, assuming that the attorneys have had the opportunity to do what they need to do, to be taking action, you know, possibly in a May meeting. But anyway, but it would, we could use that meeting instead of having a separate public hearing. So, basically, what we're looking for on this topic tonight is giving direction to the town attorney, and just determining what the pleasure is of the board, whether we want to ask staff to market the 29th as an opportunity to also talk with us about this, or do we want to look at scheduling a public hearing? So, what do you guys think?
I like the idea of using the public forum. I mean, last year, it was a little light, so I might as well take advantage of that time.
I agree.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to ask our attorney to work with NAGS Head's attorney to develop the agreement, as well as for staff to publicize the 29th as the open forum, but that we will also be encouraging comments on beach driving?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the town attorneys from Kill Devil Hills and NAGS Head working together on a reciprocal agreement for beach driving and honoring the appropriate permits, and also moving forward with having this be a topic advertised on the public forum.
Great.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, we will move on then to new business. The first item under new business, there's item number 1A and B related to beach nourishment agreements. The first is the inter-local agreement, and then the other is agreement for bond council for financing. Debbie, may I call on you to kind of introduce these further?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As you stated, the first agreement, or the first is inter-local agreement with Dare County. The towns of Kitty Hawk and Duck have approved these. This simply just puts to writing, so everyone understands what all the parties will be doing as we move forward. It allows us to have this as one project. We're really thinking that that will help us with getting the lowest cost possible for all. Dare County will continue to manage the funds for the dredge portion as a cumulative project, and each town will deposit its share according to the agreement. As we've talked about before, there is a certain amount of money in the pot. If the bids do come in over that, then each municipality is responsible for whatever overages they may have. We're obviously hoping that that isn't the case. It has been reviewed by the town attorney, and at this time, we would recommend the board approving it.
And just one other statement, you know, I think you all are aware that the mayors from the different towns, we have been meeting with the town managers and the county manager for months, and so, a lot of the items that were in this have come from the discussion at those meetings. Would anyone like to make a motion?
The only question I had was, is there any operational decisions that would be made with regards to just at this level, or any things that are specific to the towns or their projects would still remain here?
Yes, sir. Each town would make their own operational decisions.
Okay, just the funding itself, just to streamline it?
See, the town will continue to make all the decisions and handle all public inquiries, press releases, and other requests for information.
The county made it very clear at one of our meetings, they will not be taking those calls, they'll be sending them to us. So, yeah, they do not want to have any part in the operational decision-making or the interaction with folks that have questions. They want that to go directly to the town that they're referencing.
Okay, we can do these under one motion, if you'd like for me to go on to the second one?
I think that's great.
Okay. The second one is the agreement for bond council for financing beach nourishment project. The engagement letter that's in the packet sets forth the terms and conditions under which Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein LLP will serve as the town's bond council for financing our portion, excuse me, of the beach nourishment project. There's no specific fee in the agreement, as it's customary for a fixed fee to be established so that it can be included and paid for from the project's funding. There are months before the financing will occur, and the project will continue to develop between now and the financing phase. At the appropriate time in the process, a mutual agreed-upon fund will be negotiated. Having the agreement in place at this time allows the town's finance director to rely on Parker Poe's experience and expertise as we move forward. As we've talked about in the past, we will need to go to the local government commission and get this financing approved, and that's one of the areas that they will be very beneficial for us. And they have worked with Beverly on MSD work, as has the, gosh, Beverly, the name, Carter Group, thank you, they went right out of my head. So, with that, staff recommends approval of the agreement with Parker Poe for bond canceling for financing the beach nourishment project as presented. And what we have done is, based on comments from them, have an estimated $40,000 budget amendment to provide funds for their services, and a motion would be in order on both of these.
And we could do it as one single motion, but do you all have any questions about this agreement?
No, but I will make a statement. Just because I made that statement earlier, since I voted against beach nourishment, I will make a statement that, since I'm going to, I'll obviously state that, since I'm going to vote in favor, and I want us to be a board united. I, obviously, with beach nourishment, there's two courses of action. You either have to have nourishment, or you have to have a plan of retreat. And we've talked about that at great length, and we've not come up with a good plan for the other. And in light of that, and in light of the fact that I was outvoted, we will go forward with this and try to make the absolute best of what we've got, and try to keep costs to an absolute minimum for the people that are in the town of Kill Devil Hills. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Brandy.
Any other comments? The motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the beach nourishment agreements, 1A and B. And the budget amendment.
I knew that. I'll second that.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on then to new business, item number two. We have several appointments this evening. The first is to the Historic Landmarks Commission. This is a regular position that was created through, because of the resignation of Dr. Pulis. We have an application from Mary Simpson.
Yes, we do.
That's interested in serving.
Yes, yeah, Dr. Pulis had his employment situation changed, and he's going to be out of town on a regular basis, and he felt like he couldn't commit to making all the meetings, and thought it best if someone else could be on there. And he said he didn't really like leaving, but in any case, I'd like to nominate Mary Simpson to fill this spot vacated by Dr. Pulis. Want to do all these together, or one at a time?
Sure. We can do that.
And the Historic Landmarks Commission, we just did, I'm sorry. The zoning board of adjustments, there's an ordered position and a regular position that the individuals that are in those positions right now, actually, there's another one also, there's three positions there, and all the members that are on there right now wish to be reappointed, and I would include in the recommendation that we do that. And on that one, just, I spoke to Richard Baer today, the chairman of that committee, and I don't always do that, but this is one of our very important committees, and I wanted to get some input from him about the committee and how it's been working, and if he's very satisfied with the people that have been on there, and he said, yes, he is, so I was glad to hear that. The Dangerous Animal Appeal Board, there's two regular positions. One is currently held by Christine Stafford, and Temple Hagie also holds a regular seat. And both Ms. Stafford and Ms. Hagie desire to be reappointed, and I would also include that in the motion, nominate those for those positions.
Okay.
That's, I'll make that a motion.
All right, so the motion is to appoint Mary Simpson to the Historic Landmarks Commission to reappoint Blake Culpepper, William Donahue, and Joe Agnew to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and Christine Stafford and Temple Hagie to the Dangerous Animal Appeal Board.
Thank you, yes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, next under new business, we have, goodness, I don't know how to say Becky's last name.
Beezy.
Beezy, here from the MAPS Group to make a presentation on the recently conducted Personnel Classification and Pay Study, including implementation options. Welcome.
Great, there's a PowerPoint?
How's that?
I suspect I need to use the microphone. Good evening, I'm Becky Beezy with the MAPS Group. I'm happy to be here to present the Classification and Pay Study that we conducted for the town. I have been, I understand you've had a long meeting, and I definitely sympathize with that. I come out of an HR background, working with the city of Greensboro, the town of Chapel Hill, and then was Cary's first HR director. And we had council meetings twice a month, they usually didn't get over till midnight or later, because we were having tons of approvals and subdivision regulations, and plus, we had a committee meeting every month, so three meetings every month. They usually went anywhere from 10 to midnight, so I understand. I'm going to try to just hit as much as I can, just highlights, and take you through information. Please, as I go along, any questions you have, I'll be happy to answer those. The plan is to take you through information about the study, pass the study out to you, walk you through, and hit just a couple of highlights of what's in the document, answer any questions you have, leave it with you, give you time to go through it, and then come back and answer any questions you have at that time. So, let me skip through some of this information about the MAPS Group. Go in the right way here, you've got our brochure and our clients. I think, last time I counted, I'd worked with 200 local governments in North Carolina. So, there are two sides of the coin that we talk about when we talk about classification and pay. Classification side, looking at the duties and jobs, updating job descriptions. The pay side, looking at what's the going rate of pay in terms of a salary range from start to max. And typically, organizations do this about every five years for a number of reasons, to obviously be able to recruit employees, to have competitive salaries that allow you to get competent people, to be able to keep the competent, experienced people you have, to create internal equity within the organization, so that you don't have an administrative assistant in one department, an administrative assistant in another, the one in Department A has more difficult responsibilities, but the one in Department B is at a higher pay range. So, we look across the organization for things like that, as well as ranking jobs within departments and occupational areas, making sure that what we're recommending to you does create equal pay for equal work, and that you're not overpaying or underpaying anyone in terms of maximizing cost-effectiveness, and making sure your system is legally defensible, as well as based on the best methodology. Questions on that slide? the best methodology. Questions on that slide? Um, so when we do studies, we're updating two things, the classification and the pay. So unless there are any questions there, I will keep going. Um, the steps, uh, when we started this process, we started, uh, taking employees through the same information to establish realistic expectations. Uh, every employee completed a questionnaire. We conducted interviews with at least one employee in every, with every different set of job duties to make sure we were clear on the duties, so we could accurately classify the positions, gathered salary data, um, completed our analysis, sent a draft back to the town. Uh, we met with them, uh, with the manager's office last week to review that draft and made very few changes and are presenting it to you tonight. Um, probably the most important distinction to be made on this slide is the difference between an employee and a position. The classification plan is a position classification plan, not an employee classification plan. What that means is we're looking at the duties in the job, not the person who's doing that job. Um, and on this next slide, some of these things are some of the things that are most frequently misunderstood that I want to point out. Um, the first is, um, that we're not looking at volume of work. Um, we're looking at the duty. So if you had three meter readers all, uh, and one is, uh, reading averaging four hundred meters a day, one's averaging five hundred meters a day, one's averaging six hundred meters a day, if, if they're all doing the same duties, then they would go in the same classification. So the difference between four hundred meters a day and six hundred meters a day might be that the one doing six hundred meters a day is doing a better job. The one reading four hundred meters a day might be reading in a part of town where the houses are spaced out further. So if the duties are the same, then the classification's the same, the salary range is the same. Length of service obviously is the person and we're looking again at, um, the job. So if you've got three firefighters, one's been here six months, one's been here five years, one's been here fifteen years. Again, if the duties are the same, they go in the same classification, the same salary range. Um, employee qualifications, again, what we're looking at is what are the qualifications the job requires, not what are the qualifications the person has. Um, and I always like to pick on attorneys on this one. I, um, many years ago did a study of our bus drivers in Chapel Hill. Believe it or not, at the time, we had, uh, two of our bus drivers who had finished law school at Carolina, passed the bar but hadn't gotten a job as a lawyer. So I always make the point, would you pay a bus driver with a law degree differently than the other bus drivers? And usually the only people who want to argue with me about that are the attorneys. Um, and then finally, employee work performance is not part of classification. Again, that's the person. We're looking at the job. If there's an employee who's not doing a good job, we recommend that the manager have the authority to withhold any increases until they're, they bring their performance up to par. Um, but this is not based on the person's performance, but the market value of that job. So any questions on that slide? These are the factors we use in determining which jobs are at the same classification level and which jobs are at different classification levels. So I'll let you take a quick look at that, see if anybody has questions on that one. Um, so turning to the pay side of the coin from the classification side of the coin, there are four, um, primary components in the compensation system for pretty much every organization, whether it's public sector or private sector. When any one of these components, um, is not, um, working effectively, it, it pulls the whole system out of kilter. Um, so I want to kind of walk you through, um, those and illustrate just a little bit as I go along how the pay plan is intended to work. Um, so the first one of these is the major part of the study, looking at what are the classifications and what are the recommended salary grades. And I don't know if I'm getting too far away from the microphone. Is that a problem? Is that better? So what I want to do is just illustrate a little bit about how the pay plan is intended to work. That you have pay grades. You go down the page like this. You have a range with a hiring rate, a minimum, a midpoint, and a max. And the way this is intended to work is that the grades going down the page are intended to represent the job. So just using your police department as an example, we'll say hypothetically, police officer, uh, police sergeant, police lieutenant. And I'm just going to put some round numbers up here just for illustration. We'll just say this one goes from thirty-five to fifty thousand. We'll say this one goes from forty to sixty thousand. So when we say the grade represents the job, what that means is if grade eleven's a grade for police officer, all police officers are somewhere in that grade. If grade fourteen's a grade for sergeant, all sergeants are somewhere in that grade. If I'm a police officer and I get to the top of my grade, I can't just move down to the next grade. That represents the maximum value in the market for that job. So the only way my grade changes is if my job changes. So if I'm a police officer and I'm, I am promoted to sergeant, I go to the grade for sergeant. If I'm a sergeant and mess up, get demoted to police officer, I go back to the grade for police officer. A study like this could say, well, really, police officers should be in grade twelve. If you approve that, then all police officers would move to grade twelve. The grade and the job stay together. The range going this way is where the person comes in. You've got job this way, person this way. So let's say hypothetically, the chief is hiring two new police officers today. And let's say hypothetically, one of them is coming straight out of basic law enforcement training with no previous experience. The other one has been a police officer in Kinnahaw for two years. Now, they're both going to be police officers, so they're going in the same grade, but you've got a difference in the qualifications of the two people. So the way this is intended to work is that you would start the one with no previous experience here and then with previous experience somewhere above that to account for the difference in the qualifications of the two people. Then we go on to, um, that market adjustment or cost of living adjustment is the second of the four parts of the compensation system. Um, what this is intended to do is to keep your pay plan moving up with the market. Uh, keep your hiring rate moving, keep your maximum moving. If the town does not do this and your competitors do, then what happens is over time, their hiring rates are going up, yours is staying the same. It can get to the point where you can only hire people nobody else wants, which obviously is not where you want to be. And so the way that works is say hypothetically, you did a two percent market adjustment or cost of living. Everything changes by whatever that amount is. This would change, this would change, this would change, this would change. Whatever that amount is, the whole table changes. So your ma- m- minimums and your max are moving up over time. Hopefully this also keeps down the cost of turnover. Turnover is very expensive, um, for employers. Um, and the ones that are, you know, well, according to the U S Chamber of Commerce, when you lose an employee, the cost to the organization is somewhere between two-thirds and a hundred and twenty-five percent of the annual salary of that employee. Those in your organization, they're in those higher ends, are police and fire and utility folks who have a lot of certification. Takes a lot of time to get them trained, very expensive to replace them. So that's the market adjustment. The third of the four parts of the compensation system is, once you have these pay ranges established, there needs to be some method of moving employees across that range. Now every organization gets to choose its own philosophy of how it wants to do that. But the vast majority of local governments in North Carolina do that based on performance. They say if we've got two employees, one's doing a better job, we want the one doing the better job to be getting larger increases, making more money. Um, and so what that means is if that is your method, is that periodically employees are considered as to whether or how much of an increase they've earned. And when this is in place, and there's a pretty strong trend across the state to put more and more emphasis on pay for performance. What this would, the kind of distribution this would create is that you would have long-term, high-performance employees, been here a long time, doing a really good job in the top parts of the pay plan. You'd have middle-term, high performers and long-term, middle performers in the middle parts of the pay plan. And you'd have brand-new folks and longer-term folks who are doing enough to keep their jobs, but not a whole lot more in the beginning parts of the pay plan. So let me pause. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question, please. Uh, you said the trend is for paying more attention to that part of it. Are you referring to public sector jobs or private or both?
Well, um, my expertise is in, excuse me, is in local governments in North Carolina. Um, so what we've seen, it used to be we'd see a lot of organizations that would just do four, five, six percent across the board. Everybody gets the same thing. What we more typically see now is some kind of market adjustment plus some kind of increase based on the level of the employee's performance. Could be zero, one, two, three, four, five, varying increases based on varying levels of performance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Um, so the final piece, uh, final of the four parts of the compensation system is longevity pay. And longevity pays us, thank you for sticking with us. We appreciate your loyalty. Um, and it's usually awarded in a lump sum check. Um, and in your case, it's done on the employee's anniversary day. But that's the way you, so you've got performance and you've got seniority. For example, it's possible, probably not likely, but it's possible to have a two-year employee who does a better job than a ten-year employee. If that were the case, the two-year employee would get the larger performance increase, the ten-year employee would get the larger, um, we, uh, seniority or longevity increase. Two different kinds of pay for two different purposes. So what y'all ask us to do in this study primarily is this part right here. What is the proper classification for each job? What's the competitive salary range for that job? Once we do that, then we've got to, once we identify what all that should be, we've got to get employees into those ranges. We've got to place every employee somewhere on this chart based on the recommended classification and the recommended salary grade. And we've given you two different implementation strategies for doing that. And in those strategies, we've also done something that, um, we call a distribution analysis. And what that means is that we've taken every employee in every job, we've collapsed them all together. And we've looked at how many employees are at the very beginning of the range, five percent into the range, ten percent into the range, fifteen percent into the range, and so on. And we've done bar charts. And when we do those, what we hope to see in a long-term, stable organization is we hope to see something that looks sort of like a bell-shaped curve. The ideal distribution is to have sort of a bell-shaped curve. Unfortunately, sometimes when we do this, instead of that bell-shaped curve, we see something that looks more like a ski slope. And that's called compression. And what that means is that employees are compressed in the beginning parts of the range. And there are two problems with compression. The first is a hiring problem. Because let's say you've got a really well-qualified candidate you want to hire. And to get them, you've got to pay them right here, but your onboard equally qualified folks are back here. You've got a problem. The second part of com- a problem with compression is a morale issue. Because instead of having long-term, high performers over here and brand-new folks here, they're very close together. And unfortunately, that can create turnover. Now, in the public sector, in, uh, in local government, we consider law enforcement the canaries in the mineshaft. Because what happens typically is when they go to court, they're sitting and they're waiting to testify with, uh, law enforcement agents from lots of different agencies. And the conversation, I've been told by a number of them, goes something like this. Um, so, you know, how long have you been where you are? You know, how long have you been there? Well, how, you know, four or five. Well, what did you make when you started to work there? And often, there's not a whole lot of difference there. Well, what do you make now? And so we've got one, we've gotten this far, and one that's gotten this far, and one that's gotten this far. And they say, oh, we all want to go work here. And so, um, when we talk about co- uh, when we talk about competitiveness, there's really two dimensions to it. There's competitive in terms of what is the starting salary, but there's also competitiveness in terms of what's the actual salary. Um, so that net, that movement into the range is important as well as having the ranges themselves being competitive. So questions about any of that? Greg, would you help me pass those around behind you?
Having flashbacks to ID and days.
Yeah, I'm having flashbacks to county days.
I deal with this every day when I have her so much.
Thank you, sir.
Good.
Excellent.
Okay, so what I want to do is just walk you through this, um, point out some of the major places that you want to pay attention. Do not, it's a very thick notebook. I don't expect you to read every page. Um, so in the beginning, uh, we're left a cover page, title of contents. And behind that are, um, the organization charts that reflect, as we understand it, actual reporting relationships and recommended titles. Part of what we've done in some cases is recommend that new titles, either because the duties had changed to the point where we were wanting to recommend a different title, or sometimes titles get old-fashioned and we recommend something a little bit more modern. So that takes you to the first blue tab. Behind that blue tab that says report recommendations, from pages three through page nineteen, is a department-by-department thumbnail sketch of each different job, the primary duties, if we recommended changing the title, if we saw the job is stronger or weaker than the market, um, or right at market. So just a real, uh, quick paragraph on each different job all the way through there. If you turn to page twenty-one, that's one of the important pages. You might want to dog ear that one. What you see at the top is the places that we surveyed. Um, these have been traditionally, I think, um, this is the fourth study we've done for the town. Uh, years ago, these were kind of set as the, uh, competitive comparison organizations. Um, the percentages that you see there, for example, Apex fifty-six, Chesapeake fifty-six, Duck sixty-three. What that represents is the difference between the hiring rate and the max. So for example, if you look at this one, the, uh, a range that goes from forty to sixty thousand dollars, the difference between forty and sixty is twenty, twenty's half of forty, that's a fifty percent range. Um, we use that percentage to help us know how far above the hiring rate to set the maximums on the range. At the bottom there, you'll see, um, the two implementation options we've calculated. The first one takes every employee at least to the minimum. So the difference between hiring and minimum is if you hire a brand-new person at the hiring rate, when they complete probation, they move to minimum. Um, y'all don't want somebody sitting in that hiring rate and having, you know, being there two or three years and a brand-new person comes in making the same thing. So everybody who's at least passed probation, we place that minimum. And then, um, we've placed employees one percent for year of service above that. Now, that's a very, um, conservative implementation strategy because we've recommended fifty-five percent ranges for y'all. What that means is it would take fifty years to get from, uh, the minimum to the max if you were using that strategy, which, I mean, that's not what you use it for. We're just using it to get people into the ranges. And what this does is it, um, gives increases to the employees that are most underpaid. percent ranges for y'all. What that means is it would take fifty years to get from, uh, the minimum to the max if you were using that strategy, which, I mean, that's not what you use it for. We're just using it to get people into the ranges. And what this does is it, um, gives increases to the employees that are most underpaid. Uh, so that's option one, and you can see the cost for that implementation strategy there. Option two, um, there were, in option one, there were some places where the grades were low. We recommended moving the grade up, but the employee did not get an increase. Um, so in option two, we recommended that every employee in a job that had been identified as under-market get at least two and a half percent as well as doing, um, option one. Um, and you can see the cost for that. If you look at page twenty-two, you'll see those distribution graphs for those first two options, and you can see that the option that's more costly, um, does help your compression more. You do have, you're not, you know, your slope doesn't start at the very beginning, but you do definitely have some compression issues. Um, so if you can afford to do option two, that's a better implementation, because it does help address your compression problem more. Um, going forward, once you're, um, able to implement the study, you do want to look at some way of funding movement across that range. And we've actually given you an example of an approach that we're seeing, we see as a trend around the state for that. So any questions on those two implementation strategies? Have I said them in a way that's clear for everybody? Okay. A past, um, going on over to page twenty-three is the actual salary chart. Page twenty-four shows that list of jobs by, uh, salary grade and with the ranges. Um, uh, that also on pages twenty-five and twenty-six shows you which positions we recommend as exempt from the overtime provisions of the Fair Labor Standards Act. Um, pages twenty-seven and twenty-eight are the same information, just in alphabetical order. And then behind page, um, starting on page thirty, is the actual salary data that we compiled, so you can see the same data that we looked at. Um, and see if you have questions about what, why we recommended what we recommended. Going to the second blue tab that says "Policy." Behind that, um, are some management recommendations. Uh, when you talk to a lot of people within the organization, you pick up on issues. These, um, you can almost think of as sort of like a five-year plan of things that, um, you, uh, would help the organization improve efficiency and effectiveness. If you look at, um, page three of those, um, item number thirteen is that example of how to do performance pay, um, sort of the way we're seeing a lot of organizations do that now and a trend that we're, we were just providing for your information. So it's not necessarily a recommendation, it's just an example. We, um, also have provided on pages five and six, an example of a, uh, police career development program. And, um, there've been a lot of legal changes since we, um, last looked at your personnel policy. So we have recommended, um, a number of changes to that, to update that with the laws and regulations. Um, and one of the new regulations is, has to do with criminal backgrounds, um, taking, asking questions about, uh, convictions off the employment application and moving any consideration of criminal background, um, to doing that background check once, um, you get close to making an employment offer. Um, so we did provide an example of an application that does not have the criminal background. Um, and then, uh, and just an updated policy, um, is starting with the table of contents for that, and that goes all the way, um, to the end of that tab. And what we've done is, uh, put in italics the areas that, um, we're recommending updating and changing based on regulations, laws, or, um, just effective HR management. And then the last thing, the last tab, is the actual job descriptions in alphabetical order. So if you see a job title and you go, "Well, what does somebody like, what does that do?" You can go to the job description, read the duties, read the, uh, education experience, knowledge, skills, abilities, and certifications required by that job. So that was probably, um, the fastest I've ever done this. I'll be happy to respond to any other questions at this time.
This bitten back the class specifications, this is sort of like a glossary of, uh, job titles?
It's actually the job descriptions. Um, so it's, it's each different job with its title. You're talking about behind that last tab, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. So it's the job, it has the duties, it has the, um, education experience requirements, the-
For everything in the town?
For each job, yes. Now, I could, I was printing these off hurriedly, I could've missed one or two. But if you're missing one that you want, I'll, I'll, I'm going to make sure the town gets a CD with all of them. You will have them all. It should be, it should be most of them.
Looks very extensive.
Becky, thank you for, um, for, for all the work on this and the material. Obviously, we'll need some time with it. Um, and I, I do really appreciate you trying to condense your presentation. Um, you mentioned, you know, other towns or counties going, you know, until ten or twelve. We don't do that. We just can't do that.
That's much healthier, I can-
Absolutely. And I think we will be able to give this more, um, attention by having this to go look through. Uh, it's my understanding you recently just met with Sean and Debbie, so certainly they would be a source of information for questions as we come up. And I understand that, uh, we certainly can still field questions or direct them to you.
Absolutely. And if there are enough that you want me to come back to a meeting, I'll be happy to do that.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to work with the town again.
Great. Thank you very much, Becky.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
So this is important homework for us to read through this, because obviously you can see it would have budget implications. Um, so as we, uh, before we get to our budget, really workshop, we need to spend time with this, so we can discuss it at an upcoming meeting. I sent an email earlier today, lots on our plate over the next couple months. Okay, um, let's move on now to Commissioner's Agenda. Commissioner Midget?
Uh, the only thing I have today is, uh, a few gentlemen have approached me about fishing in Fresh Pond. They, they've have, uh, been asking about it, and they were told that we no longer use it for drinking water, and they would like to find out how we can make it so they can fish.
We are, um, I can give you an update on that, because just recently, um, Greg and I met with probably one of the individuals that spoke with you.
Steve.
And, yep, Steve was there. Or Steve, I'm sorry, Steve. Steve was there, and also, um, the mayor of Nag's Head joined us. And, um, basically, part of what you said is correct. However, Nag's Head does still have, um, in their master plan, I'm not sure what's the correct terminology, um, it stated that that could be used as a backup if they ever needed it. Um, so there's several issues. We kind of left that meeting with some homework that needed to be done. Um, Steve was looking into some things, um, and the, the, seemed to be the feeling around the table, um, was that, you know, we're open to looking at this, but we need to know what ability we have to make that change based on Nag's Head wanting to retain it. It's also with, um, zoning or-
Nature conservancy.
Yeah, there's several, several other stakeholders.
Not just us.
Right. It's not, it's not a Killebel Hills decision in and of itself. In fact, we're probably have a smaller voice at the end of the day than some of these other stakeholders. Um, so as far as a message back to those folks that, that spoke with you, um, the discussions are ongoing, and we're trying to include the stakeholders that need to be involved that have to weigh in on this. Um, but at least there was, uh, a willingness from the folks around the table to pursue it. And I think, um, in fact, Matt Byrne, who's kind of been leading this charge, um, you know, he felt positive that, yes, there seemed to be an interest at least to, to find out what could be done. So we haven't set a follow-up meeting, but I don't mind reaching back out.
Right, that's great.
Cool. Anything else?
Uh, not for this meeting.
Okay. Got it. Commissioner add one?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Ebbin?
I don't have any official town business, but I will tell you that we started Senior Games, our twenty-seventh annual Outer Banks Senior Games, today, as a matter of fact. So starting tomorrow, you can come and look at our, um, Silver Arch display that's at the Bomb Center, almost in the parking lot. You just have to go that way. Um, it's open from nine to four, and it'll be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And, um, next Tuesday, you can come at six o'clock in the morning and watch Jack cycle if you'd like at the Wright Monument. And on Friday, we have our opening ceremonies at the Bomb Center, and that's at eleven-thirty, and everybody in the room's invited. I doubt it'll be on YouTube by then, so, but anybody, anybody in the room is welcome to come, and that's our, that's our big splash for, for our actual events that are, our athletic events that open. This week is actually our Silver Arch, so it's a, it's a big two weeks for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
I don't have anything this time, thank you.
Okay. Um, move on to Mayor's Agenda. I do have, try to make it brief. Um, let's see. We have several resolutions tonight. Um, the first one, really, I don't think I need to explain, because we've talked about this previously, but it's officially adopting, um, a resolution, um, in opposition of North Carolina Senate Bill three sixty-nine, which is the sales tax redistribution bill. Um, so I would recommend adopting the attached resolution.
I'll second.
Um, did anyone make a motion?
I didn't know if you made that.
Are you counting that as a motion?
I was considering that.
Okay, so I, I made a motion. A few seconds, thanks. It's just three minutes. Okay. Um, all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. One thing I will draw your attention to in the packet, it's on the website now too, staff, um, whoever collectively worked on this, great, great informational piece. Thank you so much. If you haven't checked this out, please go on the website and look at this. It really, if you don't understand this whole occupancy tax and what the implications are, um, did an excellent job of describing that. So, thank you. Um, next is a, um, proclamation celebrating the Week of the Young Child. Um, and, uh, this is to pretty much garner public attention on the needs of young children, specifically how critical the years birth through age eight are in laying the foundation for children's success in school and later in life. Um, so I will make a motion to proclaim April twelfth through the eighteenth as Week of the Young Jo, Young Child.
I'll second that one.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also, with that, just real quickly, um, on April twenty-first, if you haven't heard, um, of a campaign, it's Sound the Alarm to Raise Awareness for Child Abuse. Last month, we adopted the proclamation for April being Child Abuse Awareness Month. A really neat campaign, um, that's happening in our, throughout our community with law enforcement and, and other agencies, is on April twenty-first at ten a.m. in the morning, um, pretty much all of these, whether it's fire, EMS, police, are going to sound an alarm, um, you know, beep, whatever, to raise awareness. Um, and then it will be followed by a moment of silence in honor of the four hundred and ninety-four children in Dare County who were affected by abuse and/or neglect in last year. Um, so certainly, it's something that, that we need to, sometimes we, we may not realize what's happening negative in our community, um, but a great way to raise awareness. So if you hear the sirens going off at that time, that's what's happening, um, but a pretty neat campaign. Uh, the next proclamation is to, um, a proclamation for Earth Day, which is April twenty-second. Um, and basically, Earth Day is, is another type of event to raise awareness on, and support for environmental issues. And then, you know, talks about different ways to do that. So I make a motion that we adopt the Earth Day two thousand and fifteen proclamation.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, next, we have a resolution in the packet, um, for continued opposition for offshore drilling. Um, we in Killebel Hills have had, um, you know, a, a longstanding history of opposition of offshore drilling. We adopted a, a resolution similar to this last June, um, but with the focus right now and kind of the, the recent discussions, just thought it would be worth reaffirming that opposition. So I would make a motion to adopt this resolution and continued opposition to offshore drilling.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Couple other things, try to move in quickly. Um, let's see. Couple of staff things I wanted to recognize. First, um, I think it was last month or the month before, we were, uh, took a moment to recognize some of our, um, longstanding staff who had retired over the past two years. Um, we also recently, Nancy Miller from, uh, the Planning Department, the Planning O, Office Assistant retired. She, um, first started working in the town in nineteen ninety-four, so, uh, friendly face back in my neighborhood, and so, um, congratulations to Nancy. Um, also, just two promotions that I think is worth noting and celebrating. Jody Long was promoted to Fire Captain, and Carl Hunt has been promoted to Building Code Enforcement Officer. So congratulations to, to those individuals. Um, I already mentioned the Tourism Board and the Fireworks. Um, let's see. Oh, big news as of today, the panels are now in place at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, so that is really good, yeah.
That's great.
Yep, in fact, it was emailed later today, pictures with those panels. So if you see anyone from Spring Arbor and whatnot-
I've already called them.
Good. Let them know, those are in place. So we got the pictures today. Um, the last thing I have is, we had talked about, um, at our last meeting about, and actually decided, oh, there's the pictures right there, thank you, Greg, um, that we wanted to look at addressing single-family dwellings the size on the oceanfront, and I think we had discussed putting it on our May, uh, meeting. And, and a little more, thinking about this a little bit more, um, and I actually had a conversation with Meredith. I was wondering to kind of get a, a jumpstart and give direction, if we wanted to make a decision tonight to consider having staff send that on to the Planning Board. Um, I think we had talked about, do we go to the Community Appearance Commission? Do we go to the Planning Board? We pretty much know where the Community Appearance Commission stands, because they already told us that, so I think we could skip that step and really send this on through staff to the Planning Board. Um, and Meredith, I think, do you have, she had already, I guess she and staff had already been working on looking at what some of the other towns have been doing, um, with this and, um, do you, is, is there a couple of things you could quickly show us? Um, just because i, if, if we can provide some consensus tonight to, um-
Thank you.
Provide, thank you, provide direction to go ahead and, and move this on to the Planning Board, then maybe in May, we could really discuss this as a board. So, thank you, Meredith.
Really quickly. Currently, the Killebel Hills has no restrictions or any regulations regarding size or number of bedrooms on single-family dwellings. Our neighboring towns do, besides Kitty Hawk. Curry Tuck, Duck, Southern Shores, Nag's Head, and Dare County. Quickly, Curry Tuck has regulations using the Florya Ratio in their single-family dwellings. The ratio varies from zone to zone from, um, forty percent, uh, point four to point five. However, we've all read that Curry Tuck has built very large houses. There is a caveat in it, that if you were a plan unit development that has a phasing plan, that the regulations in which you were approved under is the regulations in which you built under. So the houses you hear about that are eighteen and twenty bedrooms that are going up in Curry Tuck are likely part of a plan unit development that has a phasing that was, um, approved quite some time ago. Town of Duck approaches residential construction. They limit, um, the number of bedrooms based on the lot size. So it goes up to an eight-bedroom house if you have over twenty-five thousand square feet of land. Um, twenty to twenty-four nine nine nine, seven bedrooms, and it progresses from there. So they base the number of bedrooms on the size of the lot. Southern Shores has, um, limits their number of bedrooms to seven in the R S, R eight, and R ten, their residential zones. The large home dwelling is allowed in their general commercial zone, and I'm pretty sure I'm right, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, their general commercial zone is where the food line is. food line is. And that is the only general commercial zone. They have where the food line and the tropical smoothie is. The rest of it are the residential zones in Southern Shores. So in the, most of the residential areas, it's a seven-bedroom limit. Town of Nags Head is a two-pronged approach. They do number of bedrooms based on the lot size and a maximum square footage of the house based on the lot size. So, for instance, they, you can't, you can have up to five bedrooms when you have 16,000 square feet, but the habitable space can't exceed 3,500 square feet for six bedrooms. Their maximum is an eight-bedroom with no more than 5,000 square foot of habitable living space. Then they also have to meet certain criteria to get that eight-bedroom, some architectural requirements and things of that nature. Dare County regulates the number of bedrooms based on the size of the lot. They're very similar to Nags Head, but they don't go as, so far as to regulate the square footage of the houses. There is, they also have a non-conformities or a grandfather clause on the existing structure. However, that grandfather clause expires 20 years after the adoption date. So, and the next two slides are Dare County's regulations, which I will not bore you with. And just to give you a perspective of what some of our large dwellings on the oceanfront include, and they are, whoops, excuse me, we have, I don't really need to tell you all this, y'all can read them. 15, 12, 22-bedroom, that's a 22-bedroom on the left there, 16, 14. And finally, we just got a proposed single-family dwelling that will be 24 bedrooms. Just to summarize, we did the Florya Ratio, the number of bedrooms and the square footage for all the houses that I just flew through. The Florya Ratio is lowest, Florya Ratio is point two-four, the highest was point five with an average of point four-zero for our large houses in Kittlebells. Square footage, the lowest square footage was 7,965 square feet, the highest was 11,584. That doesn't include our proposed 13,572 square-foot house with an average of 9,725. Finally, the bedroom's lowest, lowest count that we just showed you was a 12, highest was 24, proposed 22, actually being built with an average of 16.2. Finally, last thing, there is a House bill that's currently going through, well, this is House and Senate bill, it's currently going through the COGS of the State Congress, and it specifically would restrict a town's ability to control the number or type of room in a building. It does not restrict, quote, "height, bulk, orientation, or location of a structure on a lot." So if you are looking to do, it's not passed, don't know if it will, but if you think, it's been, it's been through a good, it's through the House, it's back at the Senate, and it's passed four different levels so far. So the chances of it getting passed are probably pretty good. If you're looking to control single-family dwellings, we really need to look towards square footage or bulk rather than number of bedrooms, simply because it could be illegal to do that in the near future. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, but thanks very much for pulling that together. And I'm having a little bit of heartburn on that last proposal, on the last building permit request, I should say.
Well...
I mean, at what point does, does anybody consider that to be a house? I mean, that's a hotel. So, I mean, there's no, nothing in Dare County that says that that now needs to meet commercial structures?
That would fall under the North Carolina State Building Code, and by definition, that would be under the one and two family code.
I can also tell you that Nags Head tried to approach it as a commercial structure rather than residential.
Didn't go through.
It was not.
Yeah, when we get around to talking about this, I have quite a bit of stuff I'd like to add to, we'll get that when we finally get the proposal right down.
The point really for tonight was to see, instead of waiting till the 13th to determine if we're sending it to the Community Appearance Committee or not, to go ahead and provide staff direction to send it on to the planning board.
Yes.
Since, yeah, okay. Okay, so go to the planning board. Can we provide staff? Are you comfortable providing staff with any more direction about that, so potentially to reduce by looking at square footage and bulk in light of the legislation?
Right. I like the, I like the idea of trying to go around the bedroom, in case that goes through, there's no point us doing this twice. The, yeah, the lot size to number of bedrooms might be a way to go, or square footage, I'm sorry. Just depends on how many different, true different lot sizes we really have available for building, so, that would be, that would certainly be my thoughts.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, consensus on that? That's all you need? Just, we got, everybody knows?
You got my consensus.
Okay. Enough direction?
Well, I will say that the Kittlebells has different situations in a lot of cases. You know, if you take a 600-foot deep lot by 75 feet wide, that's different than you'll find in a lot of places. We have some unusual circumstances too, so I think, you know, bears, all that bears consideration, and will through the planning board.
I was gonna say, it's gonna, it's gonna go through the planning board process, and you know, there'll, there'll be discussion back and forth. So the point tonight was not to get into a big discussion, not only because of time, but also to be consistent with what we had shared we were going to do, as far as when we were going to discuss this. So, okay, thank you all.
Do we have an outlook for which meeting that would go to? Probably, it would be April, the general.
June to planning board or June to, back to us?
If the planning board, if we get it out of the planning board, we'll take it to the May meeting.
Okay, so it could go to the May planning board.
And then back to us in June.
If it gets out, we may know.
It'd be nice to get it out one way or the other from the planning board.
Yeah.
In May, if we can encourage that.
I will try.
Thank you.
I will play the YouTube video for them before we start the session.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, and last thing, and Meredith, this came when I was presenting to the Realtors Association the other day, they just asked me to come speak on town things. They're doing, they're inviting a representative from each of the municipalities. I think for futures town segment for the GovEd channel, maybe something highlighting our CRS, our Community Rating System program, because very few people really understand that.
We're actually getting ready to do that.
Perfect.
Meredith and Michael and I sat down and talked about it last week, and they're working on their app line and...
Great minds think alike, so wonderful. Yeah, I mean, we actually do, and even though sometimes they aren't appreciated for what they do, by us working as hard as we do to keep our community rating system where it is, you know, residents in Kittlebells are able to see a 15% reduction in their flood insurance, where most of Dare County, they're ranked as an eight and they get 5% off. So anyway, it'd be great to highlight that. Okay, that's all I have. So, we'll move on to Town Manager's Agenda.
Nothing to say, ma'am.
Okay. Town Attorney's Agenda?
Nothing for you, no.
All right, Consent Agenda?
Yes, ma'am. On the Consent Agenda, we have four items. The first is the amendments in the March 9, 2015 meeting. Second is recommendation for the 2014-15 lease purchase agreement. The Finance Department researched the rates with the low rate at BB&amp;T for 1.118% for four year period, and agreed to the terms of eight semi-annual payments in advance with no fees. Approval of the Consent Agenda will approve the attached budget amendment and the total of $836,789 to record the annual lease for vehicles and the accompanying resolution. The town attorney will review the lease agreement prior to execution. The second is a budget amendment to fund the upgrades and replacement for the video equipment here in the Commissioner's Room. Thank you very much. And lastly, is the adoption of the 2012 local water supply plan that updates through 2012. And the Consent Agenda, approval of the Consent Agenda will record the board's adoption of the resolution, and staff would recommend approval of the Consent Agenda as submitted.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, please sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to say aye.
It's a yes.
Not automatically, yes.
It's a yes, we're moving on. Okay, we have now reached the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Yes, Jack. My tummy's growling, so don't keep us too long. But welcome back.
It's a friction.
Futures, no, I'm good, thanks.
Very quickly, Jack McCombs, 917 Cedar Drive. I just want to follow up Brandy's comments. Last year, about this time, I invited you all to come out to watch the senior races. And in fact, one Commissioner did come out and watch the senior races. She's to your right, Mayor. Of course, she's the Director of Outer Banks Senior Games.
Part of my job.
A lot of people have this idea that seniors are on their bicycle and creaking around the racetrack and not going fast. That is not the case at all. Very few cyclists in the Outer Banks can keep up with seniors. A few of them can, but very few. These people are very, very fast. For the last several years, Dare County has led all counties in North Carolina in the number of medals won at the state competition. And I think that's a significant achievement because compared to other counties, we're rather small. Two of the Dare County people are competing in the U.S. National Senior Olympics in July in Minneapolis-St. Paul. So I think we have a pretty good record. So come out next Tuesday morning, I know it's early, but I think you'll enjoy it, especially if you've never seen a bike race before.
Great, thank you. And good luck, Jack. You are remarkable, I would say.
We're just glad you've recovered from the state finals race.
Yeah, your accident, right.
Crash and burn.
Absolutely. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Your hands? Okay, then a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't know what the rest of the Senate was gonna say.
I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, great. Thank you all that stuck with us till the end, thanks.
All right.